Please grant this knowledge for in our duties, wisdom in our decisions, and empathy with all those we encounter. We ask this in your name, our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Blood to the nations, to the land, United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we'll do a roll call.
Allers?
Present.
Deacon?
Here.
Hensley?
Present.
Lester?
Here.
Neely?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Spencer?
Here.
Spicer?
Present.
Weisman?
Present.
You made it.
You did.
All right, we've got a form. We do need action on item three, adoption of agenda. All right.
Second.
We've got a motion second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, Texas Diet number four, item A. I think I saw former mayor Landmark, man. We're going to talk about the Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament. Thanks for being with us.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I know it's on first on the agenda. I really appreciate it, man. You have a large agenda, and I want to take up a lot of your time. Next Friday, not just Friday, but probably Sunday, is the seventeenth Annual Mayor's Cup Golf Tournament at Oak Hills. We started this seventeen years ago. And the idea was to highlight Oak Hills as a very fine golf venue. And there have been a lot of improvements before then and really since that time. So the purpose of tonight is just to bring it to everyone's attention. I have some flyers that I'll leave with you that's got my email address and my cell phone. It's Oak Hills on June 2nd. It's a two-person scramble, $100 a person. It's sponsored by our Aquinas Club. We've always sponsored it. The proceeds always go to some local youth charity. This year, the proceeds will be directed to the Boys and Girls Club. Certainly worthwhile, worthwhile of the cause. So please mark your calendars. Those of you who play golf, even if you don't play golf, you can sign up right along in the cart. We'd like a little competition, maybe among city staff. This is city council, I know Mayor, you're going to play. Thank you very much. We'd like some competition perhaps with, you know, police and the fire. There are rumors out there about, you know, I talked to the fire personnel, and they're kind of disparaging about police, police departments' golf abilities. And then I get comments from the police department about, like, the...
Are you saying the police department doesn't have enough time to practice?
Yeah, well, you know, there is a, there was a concern expressed by one policeman that the new fire stations have, like, putting greens in the back, like, practice greens. So, and then...
We have a verify.
Right, have no verify. Now, what, there's a rumor out there, this is not the case, but what suggests the parking division be required to complete the entire eighteen holes in ninety minutes? We're not going to do that. That's just a rumor. We are not going to do that. But seriously, the protest is for a great cause. June 2nd, I'll, maybe Gail, I'll hand you the flyers. You need to circulate them. So my contact information is there. Seventeenth year, so please sign up, grab a friend. It's just a lot of fun, beverage too, lunch, etc. Thank you very much.
Thanks for all your work on it.
Questions, or are we okay? Thank you.
Thanks for all your work on it. It's on Mr. Plumber, man. I'm sure the Chamber of Commerce will guarantee a beautiful day. So thank you in advance.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks. All right, item B, public hearing. I have needs for workforce city council member. So again, candidates, you're welcome. Up to five minutes. If there's anything else you want to say to council members or members of the public that want to speak, this is the time to do that. All right. We go to item C then, which is the appointment of the workforce city council member. I might ask our city attorney just to kind of walk through what the process will be as we go through this stage. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I thought that was open for candidates.
Nope.
For our police on behalf of the open...
Just identify yourself for our friends to know.
For sure. Sorry, I misunderstood your comment.
Not a problem.
I meant most of you. My name is Jeremy Bowman. I'm president of the Jefferson City Police Officers Association. Fraternal Order of Police here in Jefferson City. Good evening, Mayor Fitzwater, council members, and thank you for this short moment. I won't take up all five because it will be a longer evening. I stand before you this evening, part of the fraternity of roughly ninety full-time police officers in the city of Jefferson. I inform you that the FOP collectively supports and fraternally endorses Carlos Graham for the open war for council member seat, which is and will be appointed by your leadership. See, our community involvement with the FOP outside policing is quite extensive. And through these efforts, we've had firsthand experience collaborating with Mr. Graham. This collaboration included a monumental step for Jefferson City's public safety and community as a whole, with Mr. Graham being chairman of the Jeff City Citizens for Public Safety Committee. Mr. Graham was chosen in that role because of his leadership attributes. But more so, over our direct experience in community success with Mr. Graham, the FOP endorses him as logical and reasonable to appoint to this open seat due to his prior experience as a council. Mr. Graham has the experience to quote, jump right in, has the knowledge of governmental nomenclature, committee procedures, and an experience-based knowledge of the city's budget process, which is, we know, is in our lap currently approaching quick. The FOP believes that this experience with Mr. Graham will allow for a seamless transition for the remaining eleven months of this fourth ward seat, which will benefit all citizens and those doing business within our city. Each candidate present this evening has a platform that can be publicly viewed and processed by the voting public during the next municipal election, which is less than a year away. Until a community can voice their voting rights, the FOP endorses Mr. Graham as the strongest candidate to maintain and continue the streamlined efforts with city council leadership, responsibility, and engagements. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, give it a little bit of a, I'd like to speak as well.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, back there, I'll stop here and then...
Well, I may not have any clarity. Just identify yourself so folks can help notice.
Sure. James Noah, I'm president of Jefferson City Professional Firefighters, Local 671. And echoing the FOP's stance, we have also endorsed Mr. Graham for the vacated seat through the duration of term. Obviously, throughout the last eight years of my time on the department, I've been no stranger to council processes and waging our stances of endorsements throughout this process. First and foremost, I'd like to thank all the candidates that put their name in the hat. I know this is often at times a thankless job as I see you all fill your seats as you all go through the process with usually minimal and no reward. I can say that our relationship with Mr. Graham throughout my eight years on the department, as well as his time on the council, has been nothing short of friendship. Along with that, he brings a strong leadership presence in his decisions of guiding the fourth ward, as well as the city council as a whole. I think he's drove in petition for advancement for the city as a whole, as well as for our four. With our relationships throughout the process the last couple of years, as many are aware, we've pushed forward with the public safety tax, which Councilman Graham was a strong proponent of, of driving wages, benefits, and wellness of the employees of the city. He's been no stranger to the FOP, as well as the firefighters, as well as that of the city, the employees as a whole as a whole. So with that, we gratefully and gratuitously endorse Mr. Graham for that majority.
Thanks. Just to make sure there was no other confusion, does anybody else in the public want to make comment? I apologize for that. Thanks for coming up. All right, I'll see anybody moving. Now we go to our city attorney and our intern city administrator. If you would just...
Sure.
...talk about what process council will go through. And it'll be the nine council members that are here. Check the action.
Right. So the first thing to do is to open up for nominations. And so council members may nominate any of the candidates for the position. A council member can only nominate one person, so no multiple nominations from a single council person. But each council person is entitled to a nomination. The procedure after that is largely going to be based on the number of nominations. If there's only one nomination, then there should just be a yes/no vote. If there is two nominations, then a person versus person vote probably makes the most sense. And if there's three or more nominations, then a vote where each person votes for their preferred candidate. And then essentially, continue that process with the low vote getter dropping off with each vote until there is one person that gets at least five votes. Five votes is necessary. We need a majority of the remaining councilmen to vote for us. Seconds are not necessary for nominations, but they can be seconded to show support.
Just want to make sure the public knows that a second is not required. Certainly, you can hold it. Any questions from council members? Nominations? Councilman Splice?
I want to nominate Carlos Graham for the fourth ward seat.
Councilman Lus?
I nominate Randy Wright for the fourth ward seat. I'd like to second that nomination.
The other councilman, Neely?
I'm nominating Julie Allen for the fourth ward seat.
Councilman Hensley?
I'll nominate Kathy Harms for the fourth ward seat.
All right. Anyone else? All right. Four names put in nominations, so...
So, yeah, it was a call for vote and run through the roll call. Each member will state their preferred candidate, and then the low vote getter will be dropped off. If there is a tie for the low vote getter, both will drop off. Thank you, Mayor.
Is everybody...
I couldn't hear you over here.
Yeah, sorry about that. So Ms. Donaldson will call, roll call. Each member should state their preferred candidate. At the end, the low vote getter will drop off. If there's a tie for the low vote getter, then both will drop off. And we will continue to do that until one member has gotten five votes. What candidate has gotten five votes?
Can you just read the names that have been nominated?
Carlos Graham, Randy Wright, Julie Allen, and Mrs. Harms. Harms.
So you vote for your preferred candidate in each of the rounds, obviously. It could be different names available. We're not... Okay.
Quick, quick clarification, yeah. So during this first round, if a candidate does get five votes, so... If a candidate gets five votes, then we're done. At any time the candidate gets five votes, we're done. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. If you do the roll call, please.
Allers?
So I tell the right, Randy Wright.
Deacon?
Randy Wright.
Hensley?
Carlos Graham.
Lester?
Randy Wright.
Neely?
Randy Wright.
Schwartz?
Randy Wright.
Spencer?
Randy Wright.
Spicer?
Carlos Graham.
Weisman?
Carlos Graham.
We have six votes for Randy Wright.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you to everybody that put your name in. We appreciate it. I do believe that we will administer the oath of office. I think Ms. Donaldson's going to come down.
You'll raise your right hand. I state your name.
I'm Randy Wright.
Do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of city council member, Elizabeth Jefferson.
Do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of city council member of the city of Jefferson.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Missouri.
The provision of the laws of the state of Missouri.
The provisions of the laws of the state of Missouri.
The charter of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
The charter of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
And all ordinances of the city.
And all ordinances of the city.
And will faithfully demean myself in office.
And will faithfully demean myself in office. Thank you.
Again, thank you for everybody that was a part of this process. We give Mr. Wright an opportunity to take his seat. We'll try to get you in a justice session. He's a member of council.
Does he have the ability to abstain from any issues that he's comfortable with?
Yes, yes.
All right, you're going to share in there? Thank you, Councilwoman. All right, we're going to proceed on. We've got a full agenda and some great topics. Public hearings, item number five, five A. I think we're going straight to Mr. Plup. We're going to let Ms. Donaldson read it first.
In order to the city of Jefferson, Missouri,
changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 2.4 acres of land located at 2738 Rock Ridge Road from RS2 Low Density Residential to C2 General Commercial.
Mr. Graham?
Give me just a moment. I have to pull up the calendar. While they're pulling items, Mayor, I'll just take the opportunity to reiterate what I had mentioned in the pre-meeting, that this is a rezoning request. So it's a rezoning from residential to commercial zoning. The packet does include some site plan materials. Really, that was submitted by the applicant for kind of illustrative purposes, but council would not be approving that site plan tonight. That site, if rezoned to commercial, would be available to any type of commercial user going forward. So really, rezoning is a question of whether or not this quarter is, should stay the same, which is residential, or if it's a commercial location and should have C2 zoning to reflect.
All right. Next reading, please. Are there folks here that are going to speak on this one? Okay, all right. We'll let Mr. Barron give the staff report, and then we'll go on to public count.
John, do you have the music prepared?
I'm sorry, that's not... It would have to be off the panel. I guarantee nobody wants to...
You seem well lighted.
Still getting used to this situation.
I try.
Better know where my monitor is.
Were the airlines on time today?
They were, thank goodness.
I apologize, we have put a new system in here. We are trying to make it easier for the public. It's going to be a little challenge when we get used to it. Staff has been working very hard to get it put in very quickly. Yes, sir?
Since we're biding our time, my comments won't do anything to do with our... You let me go, I go.
I don't know, I don't think we're that part of the agenda. We're not too public. We're on public hearings right now, unfortunately.
Okay.
Not to the public comment section of the agenda.
I just thought you've got a lot of stuff on...
Yeah.
I might not have that, don't go.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that you got following protocol.
Mayor, I think it'd probably be best to ask Mr. Barron to get started while they work on that. Council should have the information in the packet.
Okay, Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Mayor. And so the location of this particular request, the address being Mr. Clark Grant, is located at the intersection of Missouri Highway 179 and Missouri Route C.
Just, can everybody hear Mr. Barron?
No, no.
You're probably going to have to ratchet it up.
Jack double L.
Either that, or if you want to come up to the podium, either way.
I have a little hard time.
Promotes to you also.
Yeah. Yeah. Hopefully, this is a little better.
Thank you.
Thank you. And so, as the clerk read, the property is located at 2738 Rock Ridge Road. This is located at the northwest corner of the intersection of Highway 179 and Missouri Route C. The property is also ordered by Rock Ridge Road, which connects to Highway C. It's shown up on the screen. So the property is shown up on the screen, highlighted in blue. As you can see, located there at the corner of Highway 179 and Route C, with frontage also on Rock Ridge Road and frontage on South Ridge Drive to the north of the property. The applicant for this request is Glenwood Equities. And so Glenwood Equities is a private firm that acquires property and constructs buildings, notably for the Dollar General Corporation. And so the property is still owned by a local property owner. And so the application is to rezone the property from its current designation of RS2, which is a single-family residential zoning designation, to a C2, a general commercial zoning designation. So up there on the screen, you'll see that the property is highlighted in yellow, meaning that it's zoned RS2, single-family. Other properties in the area that are highlighted in red for zone C2, general commercial. So you can see there's C2 zoning for the Rock Ridge Road from the property. And then also on the opposite side of Missouri Route C, to the south of the property. Also, you'll note that to the west, to the left-hand side of the screen, there is no zoning designation in that area. That is because the property is essentially sitting at the city boundary line, and there is no zoning in unincorporated Oak Hills. Of course, the purpose of the request is to develop the property with a retail building. So this is a property, this is a picture of the property, showing the topography and some other information on it. You'll note that there's basically a slope of the property, sloping down from South Ridge Drive in the north, down toward Route C. Also, you'll notice that there's kind of an open area, barren area, there between the property and Route C, and that is the presence of a pipeline. The applicant as well, where are the pipelines and restrictions and such. As Mr. Smith noted, they did submit a conceptual site plan with their rezoning application. The site plan isn't necessarily how the property would develop, but it is what they've kind of stated that they're intent to. And if rezoned, the property would be available for any commercial development according to the regulations of the zoning code and other development-related regulations of the city code. This particular conceptual plan envisioned 2,000 square foot retail building, parking lot, as you can see. It does show an onsite sewer system and also driveway connection to Rock Ridge Road. As I mentioned, you know, any development of that property would be subject to all the requirements of zoning code and other development-related sections of the city code. There has been a significant amount of public correspondence on this request. I believe included in your packets is both the correspondence that was received prior to the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing, and then also additional correspondence that's been received since then, distributed by the city clerk. This matter was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their April 13th meeting. It was recommended for approval on a vote of five to four. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to that. Also, Mr. Dave Elkin with Glenwood Equities is here. Recommend giving him the first opportunity to just...
Okay. Any questions at this point from members of council? All right. The way the process works in a public hearing, we'll have individuals speak in both in support or opposition. As indicated, we'll start with someone in support. I'm sorry I didn't catch the name, but we'll welcome you if you want to come up to the microphone. You have up to ten minutes. And then we'll go to somebody that's in opposition for up to ten minutes. And then we'll alternate back and forth for up to five minutes, if we have people in support or opposition. But everybody, once we get past one of the groups, everybody will have a chance to speak. So welcome, just make sure you state your name. We've got people at home, so just make sure they know who's speaking. But you got up to ten minutes. Thanks for being here.
All right. Well, thanks for having me, Mr. Mayor, council, and the residents that showed up tonight. Appreciate y'all having me here and to speak on behalf of this project. Also want to thank Eric for the excellent presentation and his staff for all the help guiding us through the process with town hall. As stated, we are a preferred developer for Dollar General. We have built many stores for the national retailer throughout Missouri, Illinois, and Iowa. Most recently, we completed the store in St. Martin. For this new, for this new particular site, we have been tasked of locating the land and building the store, then leasing it back to Dollar General. We do not operate the stores. I just want to touch on a couple of the comments that we know that are going to come up tonight. And one of them is the reoccurring traffic. And one thing I want to be clear is that MoDOT will review our ingress egress, will review the entire plan, and will have say on all of this. Nothing can be built without it being governed by dissatisfaction. I would also like to add that there is already existing commercial truck traffic accessing Rock Ridge's other commercial leased zones sites, no regulation. While historically, a Dollar General does not add to traffic counts, engineers will ultimately decide if we will impact the current vehicle count and threshold and decide what style of ingress egress will be required. We can see on the map that this is also at a highway interchange, Route C and Highway 179. This is ideal commercial. And we feel that this new store would be a positive, and in time, will be seen as an asset to anyone driving through this growing area. One topic that always comes up is why an additional store? Well, based on visits and volumes at the existing stores in the area, along with the growth of Jefferson City to the west, Dollar General has identified this particular location for a new sort of better serve to community. The intersection of two heavily-used highways at this interchange makes this location, as I just said, a perfect spot for a commercial, regardless of the eventual tenant, whether it's us, whether it's a different commercial outlet. This is a great spot for commercial. There's no doubt that a new Dollar General would benefit the entire community here. One other comment that, well, there were a couple of comments that came up, but one I also want to touch on was septic. If you're unaware, the sewer run from here is quite a long run. We are surrounded by businesses and residential that both are on septic. The cost to get city sewers to this property would be a great expense to the project. We would be using a commercial-grade septic system that would be installed. We have to follow all rules and guidelines by the county and the city. We anticipate it being a drip-style system, and the majority of it would be under... We anticipate it being a drip-style system, and the majority of it would be underground. In addition, city and county officials will review all of our plans for septic. And I'll also add, the stormwater system will also need to be approved. Everything we do on this site will need to be approved. I'll round out with, this area is seeing exciting growth, and rezoning this lot to commercial is the most suitable use and will benefit this community. Is there any questions? I'd be happy to.
Any questions from council? Councilman Emile?
Is there a Dollar General representative here?
No, he would be the representative.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Councilman Spencer?
Within your preliminary early design?
We're gonna have to speak up a little bit too. They're saying that they can't hear us either.
Within your preliminary design here, do you have what I call basically a stubout that's already designed into the slab to where you can accept our public sewer system at a later date? Because I was told that that would be part of your design.
I don't see any reason why that couldn't be part of it.
To make those corporations so that later that transition can be done?
Yes, I don't see any reason why we couldn't find that.
Thank you.
I mean, ideally, we'd love to be on city sewer if it was cost-effective.
Councilman Emile?
Does Dollar General at that location, if it were, you know, is to happen, do they intend to hook up to public water or dig their own well?
I believe there's water to that site, so we would use the existing water.
That's a water district. That's certainly a water district, correct? Just how far is the sewer system hookup from this site to where?
Well, you have to go north. If I remember my estimates, I want to say it was six to 700 feet due north. And then you have to connect to the, I believe there's a future pipe line, or pipe already underneath the highway that would need to connect to whatever sewer we were in. And then the opposite side of that needs to still connect to the city system. But I would probably defer to public water, that's what I found out in my research.
All right, thank you very much. I think there's Ms. Lang, Jenny Lang, that's gonna speak in opposition. So I'd invite you next, because I believe you have a PowerPoint, is that correct? And then the next speaker after Mr. Lang, Ms. Lang will be someone in support. But if you just state your name for the record, please.
Just a second.
Yep.
I do have a packet, not a PowerPoint, crack your body. Okay?
Like we've got it, that'll do too, so. Is the clerk there, or someone? And again, you just identify yourself, and you're welcome to go, you have 10 minutes.
Good morning, or good afternoon, good evening, whatever this is. We would like to thank you guys for hearing our case. My name is Jenny Lang, this is my husband Kevin Lang. Do you need our address? Okay. So tonight, we want to do this presentation where you guys can really be able to see the area that we currently live in. There's about 20-plus residents who have started to meet every week since we found out Dollar General was coming. So that's when about 10, we've met every week. We talk about things, we make phone calls, so we can give you guys the appropriate information to make your decision. So we have many concerns. One of the concerns that we have right now is this is actually on Rock Ridge Road. This is the stop line, the white line, to get onto Route C. You can see it does not exist. So this causes a lot of problems because people go over the line, therefore they're not triggering the light. They wait, 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 run the light, which is a hazard as people are coming across Route C. This has also caused problems for a tractor-trailer turning on Rock Ridge, turning left from Route C, turning on Rock Ridge. If somebody's over the line, they cannot make the proper corners. So the next issue is the deterioration of the road. As you can see, there's the white line of the shoulder. So there are no paved shoulders on here, and the deterioration of the road is just constant. And I do believe that a lot of it is from other businesses down the road with their tractor and trailers. It's just not suitable. And this is just a better picture of the road system, where the Dollar General will be located. It will be located right before those trees. So again, here are some pictures of the shoulder. At the smallest side, the shoulders are not existing, but what we can measure was about two and a half feet. At the widest, they're about six feet, and none of the shoulders are paved. They are all gravel. And this is the intersection looking from South Ridge Drive, which Dollar General's, the back of Dollar General will face South Ridge Drive. And you can see that, you know, cars are backing up on the intersection. I think these pictures were taken between 7:30 and 7:30 every morning. So traffic normally backs up to where you can see that red car most mornings. And then again, there's traffic, you know, starting to back up. So from, I live on South Ridge Court, so this is a South Ridge Court. Where that telephone pole is, that will be the upper entrance of Dollar General. So that is approximately 100 feet from South Ridge Court or South Ridge Drive, because we're right across the street from each other. So again, we talked about that this is a Jeff City bike loop. There are many bicycles that do use this road. We have witnessed numerous times that it has caused problems with emergency vehicles. We have the Polk County Fire Station right down the road on County Park, and there's no place for a bicycle nor a car to move over, and there's no place to pass on this road. So it does cause a, in our opinion, the response time could most definitely be affected. And the big one is the blind curb. So this is actually at South Ridge Court. The city, county, state, don't know who paid, and did do some cleaning of the brush. We have lived here 22 years, and this is the first time the brush has ever been cleared. So we did have a city councilwoman come out to look at the site and visited with us. I don't know if he went back or how it got cleaned off, but this is the first time in 22 years that it has been cleaned. And this is just another picture of the curb. So this is gonna actually be a video. So when the red car is visible, it's 164 feet from where we would exit South Ridge Court. Again, this is 100 feet away from where the Dollar General would be located. So the car's running at 45 miles an hour. We know that just because of my son and the car that was driving. Speeding, yes. But it takes five seconds for him to be able to see me and for me to be able to see him. So in a five-second, I have a choice of pulling out or not pulling out, which comes very quick. So here's another video from his perspective. So and you can see right here, he can see the vehicle. And when he gets to the road, that's five seconds. So in a, basically where that Jeep is will be the entrance to Dollar General. So it is a very short distance. And then here's another video, kind of again, showing the 7:30 timeframe. Where, I mean, it's a heavily populated area. There's numerous vehicles that come through. We're able to, I talked to the Polk County Sheriff's Department and asked if we could legally use a handheld radar device to see how fast cars are coming around that corner. The average speed of 150 cars, the average speed was 42 miles an hour. I will say that it increased between seven and eight, and increased between three and five, were our highest speeds. At this corner, there's also a bus stop for an elementary student to get on and off the bus. And as you can see, she has to cross Rock Ridge to get to the bus. And the property, again, is 93 feet from the entrance to South Ridge Court or South Ridge Drive is 93 feet. And that's where the corner is setting, the blind curb is setting. So, and it would allow, so from, if somebody was standing at Dollar General trying to make a left, it would allow about four to five cars before it would bump up to South Ridge Court and South Ridge Drive. So here's just some pictures of Ashbury Way out in Wardsville, the lights that Dollar General will produce. This is actually from Ashway, Ashbury Way. And then the next slide is from actually Route B. So they do put off quite a bit of light to a normally dark area. And then we did Burzito on Heritage Highway, this is from 54. And the next slide is from Heritage Highway. So our next slide is Dollar General itself. In this area, there's eight Dollar Generals. And in a 26-month period, 911 has been called 626 times to Dollar Generals. So where we're not against Dollar General, our area is little prime, and we think any retail entity coming into this place will cause issues. So a couple of things that we have done is we did ask for the sunshine request to be done with the planning after the planning and zoning meeting. We did find a lot of discrepancies in that. Mr. Elkin, who is with Glenwood, our Westmore group, he stated in numerous emails that he has, that 10 people from this area has contacted him. This was in April of 2022, and asked when the Dollar Generals were coming. You guys have a petition that has 26 signatures on there. Majority of them are right at that area. So we have asked to see who those people are, just curious, and he has not gotten back to us. The other thing that he stated was that we live in a desert area, which is not true. In a two-mile radius, we have Schultes, which is a local-owned company who supports our local community. We have numerous restaurants, fast food places, hotels. So we don't really feel like that we're in the middle of the desert. And the last thing I want to say is that he also said that Dollar Generals get one truck every one to two weeks. We did call around to the eight Dollar Generals. On average, or every single one of them gets two trucks a week, two Dollar General trucks a week, and then multiple different trucks for potato chips, bread, alcohol, and so on. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions from council? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your time.
Is there anyone else in support? We'll go to support next. All right. Mr. Schulberg?
Deborah Schulberg?
Just state your name. You're in opposition.
Opposition?
Yeah, yeah, I would just clarify. I just want to make sure there's no one else in support. Okay.
Hello, my name is Deborah Schulberg.
If you could just speak up just below?
Yes.
Yeah, I know, we're all testings, but thanks for being here.
My name is Deborah Schulberg, this is my husband Elkin. We live at 2765 South Ridge Court, and have been residents of South Ridge Court to over 50 years. In our time, we have seen and embraced many changes. For the most part, these changes have been very positive to our community. One change that will not be positive is the rezoning of the property on Rock Ridge Road as commercial. Rock Ridge Road is a two-lane road with no shoulders, no turning lanes. It has a double yellow line all the way through, so, I mean, all the way to County Park. The posted speed limit on this road is 40 miles per hour, but most vehicles regularly travel way along that. The common theme that you will hear many times tonight is the blind corner at South Ridge Court. This is a very dangerous intersection, and there have been many near misses. Adding Dollar General traffic into Rock Ridge Road will only make this intersection more dangerous. We feel like the septic system will not be adequate for this type of business and should be mandated to go onto Jefferson City's sanitary system as any new business or housing would be required to do. This business will be current, that we currently have in the area, Glenwood, is surrounded. They do not have any intrusive lights that stay on all the time. With Dollar General, their exterior lights and signage would be 24 hours a day, causing pollution to our neighborhood. But the road side for the store is an unlevel rock block, which will be blasting or chipping to bring the property to gray. Chipping an area of this size will be long and a noisy process. Blasting over a period of time will cause property damage to our homes, even when the blast is deemed to be within normal limits, as we have experienced with 179 and San Mary's Hospital. The last concern I would like to press is a crime. With Jefferson City Police Department's short staff, also county sheriff, what is the plan for routine controlling, and what will response times be should a robbery or domestic dispute happen in this location? Thank you for the time and listening to our comments. Are there any questions?
Any questions? All right. Brett Gellinger? Signed up to speak? All right. Not sure about the next one.
Burzito, maybe?
No idea? Thank you. If you could just announce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Dennis Lacheck. And I live on South Ridge Court. I'm opposed to this proposal. Basically, I've been in a financial life for 20 years. And my main focus as a reporting manager is risk management. And, you know, just looking at every situation, looking at the dynamics of a particular client. And, you know, not just going to base anything off from the first thing that I see. And what I mean by that is, if I have a 90-year-old client, I basically, who lives off the income from their portfolio, I basically don't just put them into something that's very risky. You kind of look at the whole situation, the whole dynamics of the relationship. And, you know, basically with risk management, I won't basically put them in crypto currency because they're, you know, I think it's a good investment. 20, 30 years out the road, I look at the current situation. And looking at this current situation, I mean, just looking at it, you think, oh, that is, you know, a great location. But if you dig a little bit deeper, as Jenny went through that slideshow, you can kind of see that there basically is a lot of risks associated with putting any type of business there. The other thing that was kind of disturbing to me as well is kind of reading through the transcripts between the city and the private company, is they referred to put a sidewalk in. Knowing that this situation is basically, there's a lot of safety issues to refer to put a sidewalk in, this kind of just tells you exactly, you know, their concern. Basically, they don't have a concern for the safety in that area. So, you know, just to kind of refer a sidewalk and not being able to, you know. One of the things in their application is basically being friendly to, you know, clients that kind of walk to the Dollar General. And as you see through the PowerPoint, you definitely can walk along Rock Ridge without undue risk. And so just those two type, uh, types of situations, um, like I said, it looks like a good location. But if you dig a little bit deeper, um, and, and, and do your due diligence, you kind of see that it's, it's not an appropriate uh area for a business. Thank you.
Any questions? Alright, Ron and Karen Lukinov? Again, if you could just state your name when you get up to the podium. Thanks for being here.
My name is Karen Lukinov and this is my husband, Ron. Uh we live at twenty-seven sixty-one in South Ridge Court. And I have been a resident of South Ridge Court for over thirty years. I have a state licensed daycare center in my home. My concern with the property being zoned as commercial is the safety of my daycare children and their parents. On a weekly basis, my parents complain that they must wait to turn left to South Ridge Court from Rock Ridge because traffic at the stoplight is backed up to South Ridge Court. The other concern is that when they leave South Ridge Court, there is a blind curve to the north that I'm saying is their view. Many times vehicles leaving South Ridge Court are pulling out in front of other vehicles on Rock Ridge because they cannot see around the blind curve. This curve also is a huge problem for students when the daycare will catch the school bus. Vehicles are coming around the corner at a high rate of speed, which can cause for safety concerns. I have talked with first student transportation many times. Getting the route changed so my daycare children don't have to cross Rock Ridge to enter the bus. Another safety concern is that the parking lot will be a direct view of my backyard. This will allow anyone to sit in the parking lot and have full visibility of my backyard and my children's lives. Lastly, with the business like Dollar General coming into the neighborhood, I will also need to prepare my children for potential safety issues such as possible hand jobs, armed robberies, and domestic disputes. I also, as a licensed, state licensed daycare, I recall to know of any business that there is a registered offender, sex offender working at this business because I have to let my parents know.
Thanks for being here. Councilman Wiseman?
I actually have a question for Mister Marash, um or Mister Baron maybe, I'm not sure. Um how far down that road do we, can, can we monitor the speed limit or change the speed limit? Because it sounds like there's a speeding problem. Um and we need to maybe lower the speed limit regardless of what happens with this Dollar General. I just keep hearing how everybody comes around that blind curve so fast. And it seems as if lowering by five to ten miles per hour is an obvious option or an obvious fix regardless of what happens here.
Yeah, I think you can't pull that down. This is a PowerPoint. But I, I believe the city limits goes up off the screen slightly. Oh, it's right on the edge there. The edge is right to the street where the yellow stops. That's the edge of city limits before it turns back to the local.
So, so is that something maybe Public Works can contend or can consider? I'm looking at the chair as well.
Yeah, we could, what we would do in those situations, we'd go out and count the traffic and the uh speed limits, monitor that. And then that would typically go through a transportation, traffic commission. And they would vet the issue, notify the public, et cetera, and uh give feedback before we come back to the council.
Thank you.
That's something we can do if the council would like to see that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you for being here. We don't have any other names. Uh I'm sorry, Mark Bellinger? Alright, now we don't have any other names. Is there any on this topic? So, so your hand first, you'll, you'll have to come up to the.
Yeah, I got here right at the time you were just starting. I didn't seem like to sign that. So thank you for allowing me to speak, if I may speak.
You'll have to give your name, please.
Thomas Bartlett.
Thank you.
I have owned the property at twenty-eight oh seven Rock Ridge since nineteen seventy-four. Uh I am an opposition and I'd like to make a few comments. Uh the people from Chesterfield, Missouri, who put this at the P M C meeting, uh made some statements that I disagree with. Uh one of which is uh about the truck traffic. I just tonight came up at Monroe and Dunkland and met the Dollar General store turning from Monroe to Dunkland. He went all the way over into Dunkland, the opposite lane before he could make that turn. Now, this is about as bad. The state right of way is about where their uh entrance is going to start. You've got a short-term of seeing up Rock Ridge into the proposed business. So that's a big safety problem right there. And it just so happened that I saw that incident on the way here. So that is not a good thing. Another problem is the, the, that had been mentioned earlier. The curve, the speed, the light pollution, noise pollution. We got that already with the diesel trucks that come up there like it's uh Indianapolis five hundred. They're like accelerating up Rock Ridge after they're going up there. Yeah, so anyway, it's not a good site for any commercial property. And if this is a rezoned, then, you know, we could have uh whatever come in there and that Casey's General Store. Just, just a bad thing. Yeah, it's a great site on that corner and then draw up a business. All Rustville people, you know, okay. But it's, it's not a good site, on the other hand, because of all the things that we've mentioned by the other people. And um it's just bad deal. Uh would you entertain any questions from the council members?
Any questions? Thanks for your counsel.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
I guess on another hand, was there someone else wanting to speak? If you could just come to the podium, just tell us who you are. Appreciate you being here.
My name is Shana Puler. I live at eighteen fifteen Norbert Lane. And actually, the city let it sign dance right at Norbert Lane, which is right up the hill from South Ridge to the right. And the city let it sign is right there. And I, I'm glad that you recognize that there is a speeding problem and want to do something about that. But enforcing it is probably the bigger problem. I know a lot of times Valley High is the next road over and there is a lot of construction-type businesses down Valley High. And the heavy trucks and stuff that go through there and for stuff and stoneware and stuff is just crumbling that road. And I really think the city would have to invest in re, just totally redoing that road, putting shelters in and maybe your companies that bluff out so a truck of any type or commercial business would be able to turn onto Rock Ridge. Uh I know when I leave out in the morning, I may be the tenth or fifteenth car line and I'm back up to my, I sat for five minutes one day up into my road waiting to turn on Rock Ridge because there's just so much traffic. And it's very dangerous. And then when the bicyclists are out, they have nowhere to go. They're coming over a blind corner, over a curve, and there they are. And I just feel that, and with the children. Um also, I spoke to a employee this weekend of a Dollar General and they were saying like the one on Madison is low-staffed. A lot of times the, the person that show up is closed. And I don't feel like, especially for a Dollar General, that's a high-crime um store. Um there, it's just not right for our neighborhood. There's too many, uh, we're not young people, as you can see. And so I just feel like bringing a crime-ridden business into the neighborhood is not good for any of us. And like he said, that it's just really not good for any kind of commercial. You, you've got the blast, the ground is rocky, and you have to do a lot of, there's going to be a lot of improvements. And the sewer system, I know they're going to use the state-of-the-art sewer system, but environmental hazards occur all the time. The lights, just the, the whole area is just coming, I know it's by one-seventy-nine. You're really away from one-seventy-nine by the time you get to Rock Ridge and CC and it's just really not a, you're gonna have, the city's gonna need to invest a lot of money in that area to get that road prepped for any commercial business. I, it's just, you know, it's not, it's got whole puddles in it, there's no shelters, there's no, no way, you're gonna have to build it up to even get a shelter because it just drops off down into ditches. And the heavy equipment trucks that are already on there are just really destroying that road.
Thank you. Any questions? Thanks. Anyone else? Yes, sir. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. I, that's on Mister Michelson's.
Mike Michelson, this is in my ward. It's about a mile from my house. And I'm not against economic development, I just, I find it ironic that seems like all these places seem to have to pop up in the residential area. I'm sure it has nothing to do with the cost of the lot because there's tons of commercial property available down on uh West Edgewood there. When we built our house on West Edgewood, uh actually it was Frog Hollow Road and Frog Hollow Road ended at the bridge there, it's no longer there. And we had no idea that that was going to be developed all the way back to the fire station there. And the people that built on Briarwood, which is the street below us, they had no idea that was all going to be developed. And they woke up one night and they've got a car wash, not that we don't even know the car wash, but we got a car wash down there, we got a gas station, and we got all this other commercial development, which is fine, except you got lights all night long, you're trying to go to sleep and you got a lot of traffic. So it's, it's changed the whole complexion of that whole area. So we have friends that live right across the street there. When you're gonna put that Dollar General, I mean, not that we couldn't use nine Dollar Generals in Jefferson City, but put the Dollar General there and, and you're gonna have all this traffic and all these lights, these poor people over there on South Ridge Court. I mean, I just think you need to take a really good, hard look at it because I can't believe there's a shortage of property. You couldn't put that back right down the road there. There's, there's all kinds of, of property in there. I don't, maybe it's too expensive, but I'm just saying there's a lot of other property available.
Any questions? Thanks. Okay, sir. Again, if you just tell us your name.
My name is Aaron Clay Thomas. Uh I am in opposition of this. Uh I can't really say too much more than what's already been repeated tonight, but ultimately, I just don't think that this is the proper location for such a business. I live on Rock Ridge, like multiple houses up the way. And I see traffic every single day that if it's in the morning or just throughout the day backed up. Uh whether, I mean, usually if there's cars backed up, there's emergency personnel that constantly come through, unfortunately. There is a bike route that I constantly see bikers. I mean, there are risks, it is a bike loop um that goes up, up Rock Ridge and around. Uh there's so many Dollar Generals, it's one of those things where it's like, I'm not against commercial development. I mean, it's, I think Jefferson City would do great to have better businesses and match other cities, you know, where the capital in Missouri. It'd be nice to actually have some more outstanding businesses and whatnot, just to kind of not just be known for Dollar Generals and stores of just kind of similar liking, but just kind of like more um better businesses that cater toward more like a better-known, well, city that people like want to be at, not just constantly move away from. Um I don't think it's a good location ultimately, like even if it were to be a different business or uh something to cater toward young people or older people or put in a golf course or something. It's just not a great spot. It's just with the off-ramps, um the four-way stop that constantly gets abused, which I appreciate the recognition for looking into the speed. Uh that it is an issue, have to have people enforce it. And there are a ton of personnel, uh officers and whatnot that constantly come down, which is appreciated and whatnot, but I mean, it's only relevant if you get caught essentially. So um there are people that constantly abuse the speed. There are uh multiple near accidents, um nearly every single day. I've had all the frustration of people just constantly not following uh proper turn signals. There was a sign posted on the uh four-way stop to remind people that you do have to yield to green lights, they're not green arrows. It doesn't stop people. I've seen so many accidents. I've actually never lived in a place that I think, but had so many near accidents and adding traffic to that, it's just, it's not really like a probability. It's more about it's going to happen. People will probably get in wrecks, that means injured, possibly killed. You know, the speed limit should be respected and whatnot, but getting people to do that, you know, we obviously know that doesn't happen. So I just, there's a lot of property development areas around Jefferson City and there's a Dollar General practically like two miles any way you go. So I don't think this is a proper location, you know, if there's a different developmental area that, you know, definitely exists around Jefferson City and they want to get another Dollar General. I mean, I would, you know, say go for that, but I just don't think this is the proper location due to safety primarily. But I just also don't think we necessarily need that. It's not the spot for it. But overall, it's just recap what people said, so. Any questions?
Thanks. Any questions?
I just want to. Uh you brought up the trafficking, and I just wanted to direct a question to Chief Wolden. Do, do we have information on that area, like block four, us and all that?
You mean as far as traffic accidents? We could run that data. I haven't run it recently, but I do run it regularly for the entire city and the area there. Doesn't specifically point itself out. We do have a lot of traffic accidents, you know, around the mall, South Country Club, those busier areas. So I couldn't say that right now that's a, a huge traffic accident problem for us, but I can't really says how we'd be after, after something like this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Just state your name.
Can I get this to Mister Wright, his name?
I'm sorry?
Can I get this to Mister Wright, his name?
Sure.
So I help us to the, it might be okay. Thank you.
My name is Lori Novak and I live in Lakewood subdivision, about a half mile on up Route C on the other side from this proposed Dollar General. And um I had lived there for about fourteen years. I moved home because it was a quiet subdivision, low crime and all that good stuff. When my son was in about fifth grade, he's up and out of the house now, but I still enjoy my quiet subdivision. Um I'm just gonna read a little bit from my letter that I emailed to you guys. Um it's, but I, I do love Dollar General and I am a frequent shopper. Um but I don't believe a Dollar General or any other retail establishment, commercial establishment is good enough. Um and your question about having a Dollar General representative here tonight, so good. I really like that. Um there are, I, when I was drafting my email to you guys, I was looking up the, the uh Dollar General stores everywhere. And there are five within a four-point-five mile radius of my home, which is just half a mile. There are also three more within a ten-mile radius. Also, within five miles of my home, there is a Sam's store, a Walmart, a Target, a Menard, a Lowe's, and Schultes. Just two miles up the road. I don't think that this is the place for another commercial establishment. Um the rep from Glenwood mentioned that this is already a heavy traffic intersection. And I don't think adding another distraction would be a good use. Um and in my letter, I just stated a few things, a few concerns, which were traffic, crime, noise, and light pollution, the blasting that would be required for leveling the lot, and increased pedestrian traffic. Maybe coming from Rock Ridge, maybe coming from South Ridge Drive on up Route C where the gas station is. I know that there is a lot of pedestrian traffic up that way. I see it on that scene all the time. Um so that's my opposition.
Thanks. Any questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else? Alright, we're gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll go to a rule call book. Councilman Dick.
I am, personally, I'm not, I don't think it's a good fit. I'm, I'm really concerned when you go from. I'm really concerned when you go from a residential to a full-home commercial, especially in that area for a variety of reasons, I won't have to reiterate that. I would like to see that, if they want to do something that way, I'd rather see it either go to a planned unit development or raise it up to put duplexes in there, a couple duplexes wanted to, if we're desperate for housing, it would be a good fit, it's already residential. I'm not comfortable going with residential straight to commercial for all the reasons that we're in. My vote was going to be no for this.
Other comments from council? All right. Rule call book?
Deacon?
No.
Hensley?
No.
Buster?
No.
Mealy?
No.
Schwartz?
No.
Spencer?
Yes.
Spicer?
No.
Wiseman?
Yes.
Wright?
No.
Flowers?
Yes.
Seven noes, Bill Baer's.
Bill Baer's, thank you very much. If it's here, that'll take us to public hearing by D. Mr. Barron, whoop, I'm sorry.
Bill 2023-5. In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, a preliminary PUD plan for property addressed in 810 Eldorado Drive, accepting and approving the final subdivision platte Dogwood Park subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, in amendment, amendment section 19-401, scheduled parking prohibited with respect to Eldorado Drive.
Mr. Barron.
Give him just a moment.
Okay. No problem.
Any slide will do, I think, once it's clicked on, it can rewind. Click on any slide. Yep. Yep. Okay. So as the clerk read, this bill would approve a preliminary PUD plan for a residential duplex development and a final subdivision platte, eight-lot subdivision, Dogwood Park subdivision, properties located in 810 Eldorado Drive. So the properties shown up on the screen highlighted in blue. It is currently zoned a PUD, a planned unit development zoning district. The applicant for this request is Mr. Josh Logge, local builder in town. Property owner is a FNL developer, so local development entity in town. So this is an aerial photo of the property showing some of the topography lines. You'll note that the front of the property toward Eldorado. And then the rear of the property, it does have some elevation change to it. Also, the rear of the property is, along with the southern side of the property, a kind of bordering up against the residential subdivision, unless they're on subdivision south. The PUD was proposed, titled a preliminary PUD plan, shows eight residential duplexes on the property as shown up on the screen. Also, there's a sidewalk along the front edge of the property, as well as some natural buffer yards, and so there's natural buffer yards consisting, basically leaving the existing trees in place along that southern property line, shown as 50 feet wide, so there would be a 50-foot strip preserved along the southern property line for no trees to be removed. And also along the rear property line, which varies in width, starting at 100 feet at the southern side of the property, and then narrowing down to about 50 feet at the northern side of the property. Again, an area where none of the existing trees vegetation would be removed. The duplexes that are proposed within development, there's a conceptual image shown up on the screen. It would be a combination brick veneer and siding. Each was their own garage. And then this is the subdivision platte that would be approved with the bill. As you can see, there's eight lots, with one duplex being proposed per lot. Then also contained within the bill is an amendment to the parking code that would prohibit parking on the opposite side of Eldorado Drive, thereby establishing the parking in the area on the same side as this development. And this was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on April 13th. It's recommended for approval on Book 850, the developers' representative. As in the audience, and recommend giving them a chance to speak first. Any questions the council may have.
Yeah, we'll see if there's any questions for you. Any questions for Mr. Barron at this time? All right, Mrs. Sampson, invite you to podium. Welcome.
Thank you very much. My name's Cole Sampson, I'm with Central Missouri Professional Services, and I'm here tonight representing Mr. Josh Logge in this case. The proposal is to take the existing 3.72-acre parcel and divide it into eight lots. Each of them would, each lot would contain a single duplex building for a total of 16 units. Mr. Logge intends to build the duplexes himself and then own, operate, manage those eight rental properties himself. Each unit would be approximately 1,600 square feet per half, two-bedroom, two-bath, with one or two-car garage. As Mr. Barron showed on the slideshow, there's rendering of the exterior of the building would have partially broken inside. Mr. Logge has stated that he intends to rent the units for approximately $1,600 per unit. As Mr. Barron stated, the property is zoned PUD. That zoning dates back to the 1970s, when the entire East Elm area was originally developed into the State Office Park Development. The PUD requires the submission of the PUD plan, which requires us to actually show units on the property, which is a little bit different than the way a normal subdivision platte would be processed normally. Buildings aren't shown on lots, but with the PUD, that's the extra step in the process that's included here. Normally, though, the building location on the lot is just taken care of through the building permit process. As Mr. Barron stated, we are proposing enhanced buffer yards in order to help screen the area and provide some additional clearance between the development and the existing neighborhoods. The south property line would have a minimum of a 50-foot-wide landscape buffer area where all the existing trees within that 50 feet would remain. In actuality, there's probably areas that would be wider than that. That area becomes 100 feet as you get to the southeast or southwest corner of the property, and then tapers down to 50 feet wide on the north end of the property. Normally, for a duplex development, there would not be any buffer requirements between duplex neighborhood and the single-family residence, so we're more than, more than meeting the minimum here. Within that buffer area, there will be no tree clearing, that will be, all the existing trees will remain. This property was graded back in the 70s during that phase of the office development, so it has been previously graded. As was shown on the air photo, the frontage along Eldorado is relatively flattened and has an upgrade slope in the back, so the excavation that would be required to construct these duplex units will be minimal. Eldorado Drive was constructed, best I can tell, in the early 1980s. At that time, the street, the sanitary sewer, and the stormwater infrastructure were all constructed. And since that time, those facilities have been part of the city-maintained system. In order for Mr. Logge to develop those eight duplex lots, he'll have to require, he'll have to construct underground electric, water, and natural gas utilities. Right now, there's basically two separate systems, one down serving the Del Cerro area and kind of a separate system that runs along East Elm Street. So the development of this property would require the connection of those two separate systems. We'll also be installing streetlights and fire hydrants through that section every 300 feet, which is required by city code. And as Mr. Barron stated, we will be constructing a sidewalk along the west side of Eldorado. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, there were several residents that spoke in opposition to the project, and I suspected some of them are here today, there's been some correspondence that's been sent to the city council. I'll try to address a couple of the items up front, and I would ask maybe just to reserve some time after they speak to have a little bit of rebuttal if necessary. So one of the concerns that the neighborhood had brought up was flooding and stormwater. There's been some correspondence sent, and some emails gone around about flooding of the properties. One of the locations that was indicated as having a flooding problem is this property right here. From that location, there's an existing creek that runs along the east side of Eldorado and runs into a box culvert that's located on the state property in this location. That is a separate drainage area from what is included in the proposed development. So no stormwater that comes off of this development would have any impact on any, particularly any of those upstream properties. And then because of the extensive buffering and the density of development, have very minimal impacts on any stormwater increases. There's also been a lot of discussion about the location of the unit on Lot 8 specifically. So on the right hand, or the left-hand side of the photo here was the relocation of the building on Lot 8 that was originally submitted in the PUD plan. Because of the questions that had been brought out about that, we actually decided that we would send a survey crew out to actually locate that building, put stakes in the ground of where the corners of that building would be located. As I did that, in order to try to maximize the area between that unit and the creek that's located along that south property line, I did make a slight adjustment, which is shown on the right-hand side of the screen, to where the unit would basically be parallel with the north property line. By doing that, I don't know whether you guys got them or not, but I did have some photos showing where the that unit would be located in relation. Long story short, this corner of the proposed building is located 30 feet from this existing drainage swell that runs along the south side of the property. That's, there's some question about what the code actually requires on that. There was some verbiage about the 30-foot requirement, and if that does, is applicable, we are right at the 30-foot limit. There's also some verbiage in the code that gives the director some discretion on that distance. I guess the main point of this is that the development will have no impact on any of the property owners upstream. Any impact would purely be a risk that Mr. Logge would be taking. And obviously, since he's going to be owning, operating, and maintaining these units, it's in his best interest to ensure that the units are constructed, to make sure that there are no flooding or any problems from that standpoint. And that's really a, if you look at the way subdivisions are generally developed, you don't have detailed grading plans and detailed routing of stormwater through subdivisions. A lot of it is on a lot-by-lot basis. In this situation, with the developer owning all the lots and being able to control all that himself, that would all be a very controlled situation. Everything would be built in order to accommodate his needs. With that, I'll take any questions, and like I said, I'd like to have a response if needed.
Any questions for Mr. Sampson?
I just... And sorry for, you probably said this before. So there'll be, I had a couple of questions. Are hydrants every 300 feet down?
Correct.
And then what, street lighting? I don't know if you said...
Fire hydrants and streetlights are both required by the subdivision code at 300 feet.
And at one time, I think I asked about will those developments be situated up a little higher to allow for like natural drainage coming off the hill?
Right.
Around it forward, so they don't get flooded coming off the hill?
Right, basically, all the runoff basically goes from west to east across that property, going towards Eldorado. So all the units would be set up probably in the vicinity of about a foot above the existing curb on Eldorado, which would allow room between the units for stormwater coming from the west to continue where it's coming right now.
Councilman Spencer?
Was the property owner going to address the council?
I suspect so.
Oh, Mr. Logge is, he's here. I would like to ask him a question when that time is... He's here in the mail, so, thank you.
Councilman West?
So is my understanding correct that the size, location, and positioning of the Lot 8 unit will be in the final PUD as you've described it here?
The, and maybe this is just a point of clarification, and I'll let Eric correct me if I'm wrong. Like I said, a PUD plan for a subdivision is a little bit of a unique situation. Normally, most of the PUD plans that become before you are usually site plan related. So there's a preliminary PUD that kind of has a overarching, kind of sets the theme of the development, and then there's a final subdivision, or a final PUD plan that's followed up by city staff, just like a normal site plan does. When a PUD with a subdivision is a unique situation because the final PUD plan is just the subdivision plan. So there is no plan beyond what's being presented today. But to your question, yes, the unit on Lot 8 would be situated as shown on the floor. But there is no plan that comes after this. This is it.
Councilman West?
As you've indicated, this is a very unique sort of situation with the subdivision. Is the plan to retain its PUD status following, if we pass that tonight? Or is it, is the plan to change that to residential?
Once the, once the PUD is established, once the PUD plan is approved, I mean, there's really no benefit to rezoning it. As we look at these types of developments, we usually look at it on the basis of what's the process to get the project through to approval. With a rezoning, you basically have to go through the same three-month-long process to planning zone, city council, anyway. So from a time standpoint, it really doesn't, doesn't help the developer any. And in these situations, it gives a little bit of additional oversight, like I said, placing the units on the lots. The alternate to this would be to rezone the property as RD for duplexes. The PUD plan has an underlying zoning of RD, so once this plan is approved, nothing can go in with other than duplexes unless we come back and ask.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We did have someone sign up, William Randolph, to speak in opposition. Yeah, if you could just state your name.
My name is William Scott Randolph, I go by Scott. I live at 1623 Del Cerro Drive. We're the property that is adjacent to Unit 8 here that we've been talking about in the Eldorado, these duplex properties. I wanted to say, first off, we're not opposed to good quality duplexes being built and maintained properly. So we know the city needs housing, but we raised a number of concerns, as did our neighbors, Planning and Zoning Commission, and we raised these issues. And Mr. Sampson was rightly, was talking about the flooding, and since we felt that they were pretty much summarily dismissed in the meeting. I just want to say a couple of things about what Mr. Sampson did, clarify a little bit. The 50-foot buffer line that you see in this diagram here between our property and the duplex property is actually caused, actually runs down in the middle of the drainage ditch, a stormwater drain. is actually caused, actually runs down to the middle of the drainage ditch, a stormwater drainage ditch, that then flows back through our property, our neighbor's property, and all up and down. This is a very steep hill behind the duplex area. At some places, that drainage ditch is six to seven feet deep. So there's a substantial amount of water that flows down off of there and into that drainage ditch. The other thing Mr. Sampson didn't mention was the arch box culvert that's shown at the end of that, of that buffer line, so to speak, where the drainage ditch is, is supposed to be a culvert that takes all of that stormwater underneath El Dorado from the west side to the east side and runs it down to where the state office buildings are. That arch box culvert has been buried for years and years and years. It is blocked, only recently did the staff, city staff come out with back roads and actually find the culvert that's down there. So the problem that we have there now is there's not a functioning culvert that works in conjunction with this drainage facility that actually operates correctly. So our major concern was when we first saw the application that was filed and what the P&amp;Z approved was a unit number eight that could have been within 10 feet of the middle of that drainage ditch. In other words, that's what they were, the application said. We'll build it within 10 feet, you know, as the set, normal setback for duplexes from that, from that buffer line, which put it almost in the middle of the drainage ditch. And we felt that's, that's a big concern. It's a concern for us, sure, it doesn't affect some of the other residents up El Dorado. But again, that drainage ditch goes behind a number of our neighbors and our property as well. So it does affect eventually what, you know, happens in El Dorado. So I did notice today that Mr. Sampson did stake out the new location of the, of the duplex. It, it, it appears to be 30 feet. I felt like in looking at the ordinances, that instead of the normal setback requirements in the ordinances, I felt Section 31-230 was the controlling ordinance here in this situation. Now, I heard staff mentioned that these provisions don't apply to developments of a certain size. But when I look at this statute of construction, when I look at Article 1, when I look at Article 2, I don't see anything in Article 1 or Article 2 that limits the sections of below, below it all to developments of a certain size. Section 31-2230 is not limited to 50 acres or a certain amount of square feet. In fact, it says, "In addition to any other requirements sent forth by ordinance for construction designated flood hazard zones, the following restrictions for construction adjacent to all watercourses and all other drainage facilities shall apply." Then it goes on to say that "No house or building or other structure shall be constructed within 30 feet of the ordinary high water mark of a water course or other drainage facility." So in that section, "Other drainage facility" is not limited to a development of a certain size. And I can tell in the normal construction of the ordinance that that provision is limited to a certain, certain grade of size. So if, if in fact this did not apply, then it would almost be absurd that you'd be allowed to build a structure almost in the middle of a, of a floodwater drainage. So I'm encouraged that Mr. Sampson has moved the unit to be within that 30, 30-foot provision, although I could probably argue where the high water mark is on that, that area. But I think that's, that's an improvement because I think with, in conjunction with the location of Number 8 and the fact that that culvert is not operational, I'm just concerned about future problems with, with stormwater. So, and that.
Thank you.
And I, I do would like to just address, or I do would like to ask the question, if that's the case, and I was not really sure about the discussion just a few minutes ago, how do we know, how, how do we have assurance that that's where this unit is going to be built as we go forward? Do you approve this? You're approving, are you approving a PUD plan or a plan from Planning and Zoning that's based on the old standards? Or are you approving something? How do we have assurances that this is?
Mr. Smith?
Yeah, so I just kind of wanted to address, I think, that last part there. And I think something came up pre-gameing. And Mr. Sampson's probably generally correct about if you approve this, you know, it won't come back to the council. But there is a technical step where a final PUD is required. And as long as it, it's generally conforming to the preliminary that we see here today, the director of Plan Protection Services can administratively approve it. So if, if there are concerns, I think Mr. Sampson had rotated that building, building because of the concerns to, to provide even additional distance between that one, that area. If the image on the right is what council would like to see, because the image on the left is the plan in front of you now, they could make a condition that the alignment seen on the right side is what needs to be submitted with the final PUD. And then that way, we could still prove that administratively, I think. So that's something that is an option for council to consider when they begin that motion.
And that relates to Councilman Lester's questions. So can I ask council when we get to that point? Any other questions? Go ahead.
Just a question to Mr. Marash about the box culvert. And yeah, I went out and looked at it and it's still almost totally blocked up. Question is to what's gonna happen with that? Because it needs to be corrected, no matter what happens with this, it needs to be corrected.
Yeah, and it's, there's pipes we discover all over the city. You know, old pipes that have been in existence, this one was probably long ago covered up. I assume eventually it either seeped out or it ran over the road, one of the two, on a, on a large rain event. The, the neighbors obviously know better than I. But once we understand it's there, you know, CFP has pointed out, just went out and cleared it out now. That doesn't mean it has, that it has to have some maintenance in the future or some minor improvements around the end section. It's probably fairly flat, just looking at the ditch across the road as well as the culvert downstream. So what we try to do is have a culvert without, that scours itself out over rain events. And this probably was not put into that standard at this, at the time it went in. So it's not, not that unusual. So how we mitigate that with all residential properties is we look at elevations of those buildings. And Mr. Sampson already indicated, you know, that we're looking at that and building those up above the current line. So if, if water doesn't flow into the structure, we, we consider that a, a good thing. And that's, that's really what we're after. Most of these systems are designed for tamer storms and in residential areas. And so the, the routing of larger storms have to go over and then anyway. Or if you have a clog or something happens, collapse, we want it to be able to route over and do not affect somebody's actual structure. So that's, that's the key component.
So, so now, now that you're aware, will it be corrected?
Yeah, to the best of our ability, we'll go out and try to keep it clean. And we need to evaluate what its condition is as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Howard?
Just for clarification, so I'm sorry, Councilman Lester. And Matt, I can't really hear from over inside. Did you talk about the, that, you know, where the box culvert is done by the new state parking lot? That seems a little, that could be cleaned up. Is that, is that something that you said we may be able to clean that up to get the water to flow to the box culvert better? Did I miss?
He was talking about the pipe. I was trying to, he was talking about
Yeah, I saw that, but I, I thought maybe he may have asked about cleaning up that little ditch a little bit as you get to the box culvert.
I'm not certain about the ditch whose it is. It might be the state's to clean up and it would affect them to, to a great deal.
When, when the staff unblocked, if they had, they had to figure it out some.
Yeah, to get the end to flow.
Because the bottom of the ditch was actually higher than the opening of the hole.
Yeah. It probably went in, it sounds like in the eighties, you know, that's 40-plus years ago sometime, maybe. So that could have changed a lot at that time if nobody was looking at that. And once we, we find, once somebody's living beside these, or, you know, he'll be talking to us more frequently, I suspect.
Thanks for being here. All right. Do we have someone in support? Sure. Hey, yeah, just stating that.
I'm Shannon Loggins.
I'm Josh Loggins. She's back.
But yeah, as Paul said, we want to put in some nice quality duplexes, high-end finishes. We actually got a call this weekend from someone's daughter that just graduated college and heard her fiance, we're hoping these were about done because they're ready to move in, but they're not ready to buy a home yet. So I believe that we'll have, I mean, we're gonna screen tenants. There was a concern of crime at the last meeting, but with background checks. And we already own rental property and we have zero problems with those because we're so active and involved. And kind of to brag on ourselves a little bit to show people the kind of landlords we are, we really go above and beyond. One of our properties in Jeffers City on Carter Street is rented to, I don't know the name of the company, but it, it's Assisted Living for Adults with Disabilities. And they had an issue with the plumbing, so we actually just replaced the entire plumbing for them. And then while we were there, the social worker mentioned they had a grant and they got a basketball goal and some equipment, but there was nowhere for these men to bounce their basketball. So on our own dime, we poured concrete for them.
Yeah, poured in a little batter and
And that, and I'm not saying that to go, but it's just to show you that we do care about what we do and the people that are in our units.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're gonna be, I mean, we, our realtor who we do with law actually has a waiting list of people looking for price points. Because that was another thing, like, I don't know if we get that price point, but there's actually already waiting lists. And most of them are elderly or trying to get out of their homes. And we're gonna cut grass, take care of utilities. So it's basically a one payment, we're done. I don't want to think about any of it. So we're gonna maintain everything. They're all gonna be same siding, same brick, you know, pretty, pretty much same units all the way down. So they're easy to maintain as people move out, we can fix stuff. For relatively minimal cost, that's to keep them looking really fresh, really nice.
Well, I would just, I assume they can have custom cabinets and nice appointments probably made on the east end?
Yeah, yeah.
Custom cabinets, like four tops?
Yeah.
Got two over here. Councilman Spencer?
First off, thanks for making a significant investment in this development. Secondly, can you give some examples of other developments that you all participated in?
This is the first development?
This is our first development. And my dad puts in developments all over Jeff City.
And, and that's kind of what I was alluding to.
Okay.
Your dad has a great reputation in our community, is a top-quality builder in the world. I'm sure the apple doesn't fall too far from the tree.
Yeah.
And so, you know, could you, could you give some examples of your father's?
Yeah, my dad put in Turtle Creek, which is over, oh, kind of off, is it South Country Club? Over there, which we did, like, back then I was gricking more than anyone else, I gricked most of those houses. And then he put in the one over here by Schultes. June Court, Trenton Court, he's got them everywhere.
They have to green it.
There's Lisa Subdivision in Wartville. I know I'm forgetting some. He's working on, he's always working on something. He's got one going in St. Marge right now. Is it Carol Place?
Carol Place.
I think. So yes, he's got them, he goes, he's got them everywhere.
You got a plan, I'll stop it.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
Yep.
Councilman Miller?
Well, thanks for being here. I was really excited to hear that you all plan to leave the tree line behind in the back of the property. And you're pretty upset on that.
Yeah, yeah. It starts getting a little steep back there, so they should sit right on the flat spot. But we, the less active disturbed, the more cost-effective it is. If it stays out of the tree line and the rocks, it's beneficial all the way around.
Yeah. Well, and too, you know, with all the impervious new
Yeah.
area that I think, you know, those trees, developed trees with deep roots as well.
Yeah, help keep
Help some to stormwater.
Councilman Red?
Yes. Thank you for being here and going over the project, and thank you for putting up such a big investment. What is the price point gonna be for these rentals?
For a month or four, we're gonna have them.
For the monthly rental for?
About 1,600. There's one that were, it's a little bit bigger than the other, it might be closer to 1,800. Some, one of them, one of them has a single-car garage for each unit, and one of them has a double-car garage for each unit. So they're
Little car, maybe.
Maybe just a little bit more.
Okay.
But we're trying to include everything in that, so.
One additional question in the backyard, because that does back up to that, to that hill. Do you anticipate you'll have to put any retaining walls?
No, we really shouldn't. It's kind of kept pretty nicely the way it is. Some of them probably have little pins in the backyard, because we are gonna allow small hogs. So we'll probably put little pins for each unit so they can, oh, sorry, fencing, just a little pin in the yard. And then the rest will cut around.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Miller, how do you stand up?
What site you plan to start on first? ESS, ESS or?
Probably the one, I guess Lot 1. Probably Lot 1 and work
towards El Street?
Yeah.
Councilman Miller?
I just wanted to say, finally, I appreciate you all allowing pets. I get it. I grew up with my parents doing rentals and totally understand not allowing it. But also, you know, that's one of the things I hear in town too, is it's hard to find a place to rent with an animal. And a lot of people, that's, you know, that's their family and, you know, one thing they have in their life. So thank you for doing that.
Just
Councilman Howard?
Just one last thing. What do you plan on starting this after, if this is approved? How soon before you start?
It'll probably be, because I also build houses, so we have a lot going on. So we're hoping to start infrastructure this fall. So probably if we can get the sidewalks and all, or the, the water, gas and everything in, start in this fall, then hopefully going in, probably, probably springtime would be my guess when we got a real start. Because if we get everything ready to go, then we're ready to just jump in when the weather breaks.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody.
Is there anyone in opposition? Samson, did you have anything you wanted to get to go? All right. Yes.
Um, I just had a couple of questions.
Wait, yeah, you may come up, put in and just talk through your Thank you.
Thank you. So my name is Lana Bremer. I actually have a house up on Del Cerro. So my questions were mainly good towards how to keep the neighborhood the way it is. Because I specifically chose the neighborhood that I moved into three years ago for the safety-wise, for the fact that I could walk my dog late at night and not have to worry about being hit by a car, having just cars everywhere where I'm not feeling safe as a young woman in Jeff City. How to upkeep the maintenance and stuff. They say they're gonna keep them for yourselves, you're gonna maintain them. What's your guarantee to actually keep them updated and keep them looking nice? And maintaining the standard that the rest of the neighborhood of Del Cerro, El Dorado, and all those other areas have?
I can answer this.
Sure, yeah. I was just gonna say, it's only beneficial to us to keep them nice. If we don't, the rents will go down.
We want to keep them. Yeah, no one will want to rent them.
Oh, just to keep as nice as possible, to keep people wanting to rent.
Yeah. And then I think like the safety issue, I think our tenants would have the same concerns, you know? If they want to rent, is this a safe place to rent? Can I walk my dog? So I think you guys all have common interests. Just if you are homeowners, these people aren't. I don't think, I think there's a stigma around renters and they're all, you know, not homeowners because of bad reasons. It's not because of these people wait on homeownership, or maybe they've had, you know, had a home and they're in transitionary period. We were renters for a year.
Yeah.
And he was traveling with some work. People rent for all kinds of reasons.
It might be nice if we're gonna vet them and they're gonna be good tenants. No, or anybody's gonna destroy our stuff.
Right.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is David Rosell. And I, along with that safety, a couple of weeks ago, this guy's parking. I don't, I don't think it's been addressed today. They had talked about not allowing parking on the east side of El Dorado. And that it hasn't been clear how many parking spaces there are available on the housing side, west side of El Dorado. We have the driveways here. Just this week, I saw maybe 10 to 15 cars parked along El Dorado for a meeting. Just this week, I saw maybe ten to fifteen cars parked along El Dorado for a meeting of the business that's happening there. And also, the people that work in the state, go out on the brakes and exercise, and they walk four or five down the street. So I'm just curious what kind of parking traffic may have helped.
I don't know, Mr. Barron, you, or Mr. Smith, you want to go?
Yeah, I mean, it's not uncommon, the developers indicating he's going to put a sidewalk in this area. When we do a new subdivision on a new street, we go ahead and based on the width, decide parking to one side or the other. Typically, we are working with developers in many residential layers to kind of narrow the streets anyway, helps with speeding. And then maybe just parking on one side or something like that. But in this case, the street's existing, the width would indicate it should have only had parking on one side. And so that's why during this process, we would go ahead and add that to the street. If for some reason parking becomes a problem in these residential areas, there is an opportunity for the residents, particularly the city, have a residential permit parking zone. That happens a lot around schools or other heavy uses, like in university, things like that. That might be a possibility to, a possibility here if it were to become a parking with a, a parking problem with a residence. Sounds like though, the units will have at least three spaces, garages, you know, one and twos, plus some room in the driveway. With only two bedrooms in both, it's what you were indicating, it should be ample parking. Most people would probably park in the garage, but I mean, I've guessed that one parking the street or whatever, maybe to come visit you. Certainly, it seems like a reasonable accommodation here.
Councilman Allen.
Matt, with the approval of this, you said it'll all go parking one side only? Does that have to go before transportation committee to come in and out, or is that automatically set by this vote tonight? That, and will that be done immediately? Or is it go through a process?
A little time, but yeah, I think it goes into play when this is approved, in this process, it's, it's part of the, yeah, it's part of the ordinance.
And speaking of.
Also, we have to order the signs or make the signs, whatever, and put them up, so it takes a little time, but not, not an extreme amount of time.
Well, there'll be notice given to that company down in the end of it, because today, with the last few days, there's been parking on both sides right there next to the intersection of Elm and El Dorado. That is a little dicey turning into, so I don't know who, we will maybe direct that question to, just, hey, can you back up?
They're probably notified of this process since they're adjacent, but, you know, certainly we'd be available.
Okay.
Do that.
Thank you, guys.
Hit your name, please.
My name is Susan Randolph, I live at sixteen twenty-three Del Cerro. I'm, my property is adjacent to unit eight. And I guess this comment is directed more directly to the city than the builders. Y'all came out with big equipment and dug out that ditch and deposited dirt on the side of the ditch, the drainage ditch. The tube that goes under El Dorado, something like this big, and it's still this full. So that dirt sitting on the side is just going to fill right back in. Our house was built in nineteen eighty. Our house has a driveway leveled with the street. We don't have the luxury of elevating our house, so it won't be flooded. So we're an existing, we have an existing situation, and I am concerned, still concerned. I didn't hear a lot of assurances that y'all are going to really fix that drainage ditch for us. And I know Mr. Samson likes to say that, that, that other flooding on the corner of El Dorado and Del Cerro doesn't have anything to do with the new property that we're talking about developing. But we are on the corner of El Dorado and Del Cerro, where that flooding and then the potential of this ditch flooding impacts our house. We're right in between those two areas. And so I'm imploring the city to come out and fix that ditch and quickly. So we don't have to worry about flooding. The property, in case the city council doesn't know, is a form of flooring, and it's very shallow dirt on top. There's not a lot of dirt to absorb any water, so it's going to rush right over. And I understand the dirt that exists taking down off of the mountain, not the mountain, but the hill that's up behind this property. So there is reason to be careful with the flooding, and I would really, you'll be hearing from me.
Yeah, if, if I could, we would probably get you in touch with our stormwater engineer and he'd come out and talk to you about the situation. I did get a text earlier from our street supervisors, had me watching the meeting, said, you know, we just went out and opened it up quickly, but there's quite a bit more work to do yet.
Okay, that's nice to hear, invited to hear it, all right, thanks for indulging me.
But Don Fontana is our stormwater engineer, and I will have you get to.
Thank you.
All right, there's no further witnesses, we'll go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing. Counsel, any other questions? I know we need action on some language I think you want to put in, Council, Councilman Lester.
Yes, I would just propose to put a condition on, on this duty plan that as presented tonight, with the orientation and location of unit, lot unit eight, be as shown, as revised, and to also with that, address the stormwater concerns. And basically, as I understand, it would be in compliance with that section of the code. Talks about the distance between a structure and a drainage.
So you're proposing as amendment to twenty twenty-three dash zero zero five?
Correct.
Second.
No second.
Any discussion on the amendment? All favors, say aye.
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 We have the amended bill in front of you, and other comments. Do you all call them?
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Bailey?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Hallers?
Aye.
Heaton?
Aye.
Phil Passus.
All right. We have been here two hours, we're going to take a five minute break and get right back and go toward you there. Right on.
Hello. Thank you. I was catching some. It's a very, I guess, it's, it's, it's. I don't know if you had a taste.
Bill twenty twenty-three dash zero zero six.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, changing and amending modifying the zoning map with the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning twenty-two point five one acres of land. Located as a twenty-nine hundred block around CC from RU rural to RS two low density residential.
Mr. Barron, welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor. So up on the screen is the property highlighted in blue. It's located about a quarter mile south of Route C on Highway CC, so State Route CC. And so apparently the pointer here does work. You have Route C up there at the top of the screen. So over there is the intersection of C and Route C. About a quarter mile south of that is the subject property. The property is currently zoned at RU, which is a rural zoning designation. It's been zoned that way since AMIC station back in two thousand and eight. So it's quite a Capitol Hill voter approved designation area. This request is to rezonate the property from that RU rural to an RS two, a single-family residential zoning designation. The purpose of the request is to plat the property in seventy-five and develop it as a single-family homes. The applicant is Mr. Dave Burks. So up on the screen is the property, the topography shown on it. There's a lot of topography lines there, but there is a bit of a ridge line that kind of goes through the center of the property from right there. And when this was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was paired up with a preliminary subdivision plat. So up on the screen is a preliminary subdivision plat that was presented to them. I have another one that shows a close-up of that on top of the aerial photo for the area. So that preliminary subdivision plat would, you know, shows a street along that ridge line ending in a cul-de-sac bowl. A stormwater detention facility toward the far eastern side of the property. And lots on each side of the street. Also, three lots with direct frontage on Route CC. Also sewer easements, the sewer is actually would be extended from east of the property, it's kind of shown, and then would be extended to get to this property. And then extended through the property as part of the subdivision plat with extensions to the neighboring property lines. For example, you can see a sewer line would end right about there, but an easement would extend on up to the neighboring property line. Also down in this area in order to allow for connectivity to neighboring properties. So if approved, this rezoning was approved, then we would expect a final subdivision plat to be submitted first for review by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then for approval by the City Council on a later date. And then that subdivision plat would need to be in conformance with this preliminary plat, which was reviewed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So the Planning and Zoning Commission heard the rezoning request at their April thirteenth meeting and recommended approval on a vote of eight to zero. The applicant's consultant, Mr. Paul Sampson, is here this evening and will be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions for Mr. Barron? All right, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and invite Mr. Sampson to come to the voting.
Thank you very much. Paul Sampson, Central Service of Professional Services. As Mr. Barron stated, this case is being presented by Mr. Dave Burks, who has recently purchased this property. It is in the very southwest corner of the city and is zoned RU. We are proposing an RS two zoning for the development of a single-family home subdivision. As Mr. Barron stated, today, the only thing that's being approved is the zoning classification. We did, in Planning and Zoning, submit a preliminary subdivision plat, which was also approved. With the approval of the zoning classification tonight, I think it's Mr. Burks' intention to move forward with the final subdivision plat, which though will then go back through the same process of going through the planning and zoning. I think you'll see that back here again several months going away. The RS two zoning butts up to some existing RS two zoning that's just to the north. And although the neighboring properties are unincorporated to the south and to the west, that type of classification is very similar in nature to residential properties that are adjacent. From the zoning standpoint, that's, there's really not much to it. Answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. Sampson?
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that wants to testify in opposition or testify? All right. I'm sorry, sir. Just state your name, please.
My name is Randy Fordy. I'm not necessarily in opposition or in favor. I have two concerns. I live just to the south of that proposed changed area. And if you're coming from the south going north on Route CC, where the entrance to the proposed subdivision is going to be coming through, as I found out today from a representative of MODA, there's a blind curve. And so I've got concerns as I'm coming to the south on Route CC to my subdivision, which is on Foxmore Court. I have to really slow down and advance going south because of traffic coming behind me. So I don't get rear-ended making a left into Foxmore. And if you're going north on Route CC, you've got a blind curve that's coming right into the proposed entrance to the subdivision. So as city staff, I think you need to be aware that there may need to be some changes made in conjunction with the Highway Department in CC as a state highway. And as I've seen proposed, if they're putting in twenty-nine lots in that location, forty to sixty more cars are going to be dumped into the intersection of Route CC and Route C, which is going to require some upgrading. Once this is done, it is going to have a major impact on traffic. If any of the council members have been out in that intersection at high-traffic areas, a lot of traffic comes in from Russellville area in the morning, goes back out, you've got your traffic coming off Route one seventy-nine. So those two areas, you need to look down the road and say, maybe we should have thought this out and made some better plans as far as even signage or improvements because of this.
Good. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Anyone else to testify? Mr. Sampson?
You know, I'd just like to make a statement regarding this comment. So during the plan production process, we did meet with the Highway Department and their permit inspector, the man who actually writes the permits. While they went out measuring the site distance at the proposed intersection location. And actually, from where we originally had it before we submitted the plan, they did require us to move that intersection south. I think it was about seventy-five feet to improve the site distance. So that has been looked at. There is not going to be a blind corner there. The site distance will meet the state minimums. And then as we get into the final subdivision plat and improvement plans, they'll have to be detailed construction drawings that will all have to be submitted to the Highway Department. And the Highway Department will have to approve those before any construction can start. So MODA is fully aware of that and working with us throughout that process.
Great. Questions? Thank you. All right. I'll see anyone else. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing now. Ask council one more time if you have any questions, comments. All right, we'll go to roll call vote.
Lester?
Aye.
Neely?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
All right, thank you. That takes us to item five D, Bill twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter three of the city code pertaining to temporary signs.
All right, Mayor.
Thank you. I don't have a slide to show on this one. It's a title slide. And so this bill originated at the Public Works and Planning Committee. So after successfully clearing that committee, that was forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission for review and recommendation to the council. So that is the path the bill took. What this bill would do is amend chapter three, the Advertising and Sign Code, in order to, the temporary signage provisions, in order to permit advertising flags at a rate of one per property frontage. And also to permit yard signs, small, approximately a couple of square feet, generally cardboard signs placed in the yard, at the rate of one per business. So a single business on a site would be able to have one. A strip mall or some other multi-tenant building would be able to have one per business that's contained within that building. And it'd also increase the size of certain temporary signs that are granted in residential areas, uses such as apartments and churches. And so those almost commercial type uses that are located and permitted in residential areas are granted a certain amount of temporary signage, twenty-five square feet. This bill would raise that up to a thirty-two square foot maximum size for a temporary sign. This item was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their April thirteenth meeting. Recommendation for approval on a vote of seven to one. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have prior to the public hearing.
Okay, question. Councilman Mills?
This may not be a question for staff, but what, was there a single situation that brought forth this change? Was there an issue that somebody had?
Well, I've heard the bill sponsored in the Department of Transit.
Councilman Spencer, you want to address it now or later?
Whatever would be fast-tracked. We've been, I can address it now. I've received some calls about businesses and churches needing to promote special sales or programs that they have. And feathered flags or those what I call like political signs or war-based signs is something that they would like to be able to utilize to promote those kinds of programs or sales or services in businesses. It was just an opportunity to help promote businesses and churches. I've received quite a few calls from churches as well that like to utilize that signage.
Okay. Councilman Deacon?
In the language, is it temporary or are the feathered signs what's there up there or there?
They would consider temporary signs, they fall within the temporary sign section of code.
Do they have to be taken down every day or they're allowed up for?
So they would be allowed up for, but we don't necessarily have a specific temporary signage time. So generally, it's expected that the individuals put in signs up there. We kind of remove them once they've, I think, exhausted their lifespan, which is usually temporary. They're not made as durable so that they would be removed at some point in future.
I don't have a problem with the churches, things with anniversaries are a one-time thing. I'm not comfortable with the feathered signs. Those are for impulse buys, usually in tourist areas. You go down to dogfights, you say, "Grand, grand me, grand me, spend my money here." I could just see a vision, Missouri Boulevard uptown, down across from the old raccoon with YMCA. Nothing but feathered signs everywhere. It just looks like a tourist trap. I only see that, those signs, in tourist areas. It truly is for an impulse buy. But these businesses need this sign to bring in their customers. They don't have a very good business model because once you're established, people are going to come. You don't need the signs. Our restaurants are doing well without the big signs. I can understand it for a grand opening, anniversaries or a special event. The feathered signs, I really have, I just don't think it's, it looks nice. Good grief. Drive through any vacation areas, you don't see it. You see it in the Grand Canyon, whether you want to spend your money or some of those places, but you don't see it in the nice places. And right now, we're trying to have Jefferson City present a really good image. We're trying to get our streets fixed, our curves looking nice. So people come in and say, "This is pleasant." And I notice that when I go through a town, I'll notice all of a sudden, "This town is nice. It's well-kept. Everything's in proper order." And you can tell when the run's stuffed, old signs hanging around, it seems like it's in decline. I, we have a big problem with our sign orders. Planning and zoning went through, we went a number of years ago, in two thousand and seventeen, actually, we spent so much time on it. There was some kind of staff who got pulled from council because of language, but never did come back to council. I think we have a good sign order there that could be resurrected because it dealt with the four-by-eight signs. Because we said it was just like Christmas. If you can have a four-by-eight Christmas card in your yard, you should have a four-by-eight political sign in your yard. There's no difference. Somehow it got sidetracked. I can see churches having temporary stuff, but personally, I just don't like the feathered signs hanging around. Oh my gosh. They look like the old dog patch down Lake Ozone. I'm done.
All right, guys. All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak on feathered signs? Nope, but we will go ahead and conclude and close the public hearing. Any other comments from city council? Councilman Alves?
Again, yeah, some of the concerns I had is if we have a bunch of them up, is it distracting to the drivers? You know, we already have a problem with people on their phones all the time too. Mayor and Mr. Deacon, they kind of go along with what you said, so I'm a little hesitant to allow this.
I think we should tweak the design art design, that the churches, these places were temporary to get the people in. But the one part that really bothered me was the flags. That's the only part, one of the feathered signs. I've been through areas where they're tattered and it just, well, it looks like the areas of sixty-six that people want tourists now, it's all falling apart. Building Route sixty-six. You can see those kind of signs falling apart, I guess, installing.
Other comments? Councilman Mills?
Sorry, just one more. Does staff have any concern that this would increase, like, they're not nuisance calls, but like when you get in the portal and somebody complains about an item, would that, would that concern you with a bunch of increased signage?
Well, I wouldn't categorize it as a concern, but it is a possible outcome. If temporary signs stay up past a certain lifespan and we do get calls, we respond to them. I can't, I can't warrant a guess as how much that would increase, really increase at all.
Yeah, it would be pure speculation, but I, you are pretty confident that you, your team could handle this?
Yeah, I think they've got experience in lots of different calls and this would kind of, I think, fit within our guidelines.
All right, thanks.
Councilman Spencer?
My original approach to this was when I defined temporary signage, I defined it as hours of operation. So that, especially with the feathered flags and those small signs, they can be easily placed and easily removed. And so that was kind of the genesis of, as far as throwing it into the temporary signage category. Just a little background.
All right. Councilman Lust?
I don't know if you can address it here, but it does seem like temporary signage should have some, some limited definition of when they're, how long they stay up.
Well, I think some of that would be common sense approach in the sense that a furniture store that has a special sale on furniture, they're not going to leave it for the next two years. But, you know, you know. And I think also, we also approach it from an enforcement standpoint of condition as well. There are signs that are in disrepair. Those businesses get notified that we need to make some repairs to your signage. So a tattered or a ripped feathered flag, I think would fall under that enforcement.
I guess, I guess I'm mainly speaking to Councilman Deacon's concerns that something added to the program or timeline of the review. I don't have the language, so I don't have anything to offer, but it just seems like temporary signs, especially the flag, advertising flags, some language to just stay out there for indefinite period.
Other comments? Ready for roll call vote on twenty twenty-three dash zero zero seven?
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Allers?
Oh.
Deacon?
No.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
No.
Six ayes, full passes.
Okay. For those following, we're going to move to page two. Item number six, appointments by the mayor. Comments? Councilman Spencer?
I'd just like to make a recommendation motion that we table these appointments until the next council meeting.
We've got a motion to table these until the next meeting. Councilman Neely?
Just a general comment. I, coming, I would like to go through this tonight, coming from the commission that I was on before I was elected onto council. You know, these are volunteer positions and I think when the commissions are full by these volunteers, that it's an advantage to the taxpayer because some quality work is getting done. So if there is a lack of members or just in general more voices on the group to make quality decisions, I think that's a good thing. So these are pretty routine and I don't, I wouldn't wait for them to.
Got a motion?
No, sir.
Councilman Lust?
Just, I know these have been reviewed through administration. I'm just wondering about why we feel like.
I just think it gives the opportunity with, you know, the new mayor's been kind of taking on issues like drinking out of a fire hose, so to speak. So I think we give him an opportunity to have some input and involvement in that. Not saying that he hasn't, I'm just saying that maybe a little pause did not hurt. It's a timing issue. There's been some applicants that would, that have submitted their application to serve on some of these boards and commissions. Give them an opportunity to be reviewed and possibly recommended.
So, so from the administration? So from the administration committee, I mean, that's occurred, right? The review of these applicants has occurred by city state. The review of these applicants has occurred by, by city staff.
Want to, uh, chair of administration, I don't know if you have any comments?
I think it's at the pleasure of the mayor. I mean, if you feel like this, you've adequately had time to review and, because these are your appointments, then I suggest we move them on. If you feel like you would like a little bit more time to review, then we'll give you more time to review. I, I'm not opposed either way. I'm not, I'm not invested in, personally, in any of these appointments. We already appointed my husband on the USS Jefferson City Committee and that's all that matters. Thank you.
Well, just to take the burden off staff. Staff did present it to me. There were a lot of things going on. If I had a little more time to look at the names, I don't know that I would change it, but it, it would be helpful. But staff did do what they should have done, which is hey, here's the list. I probably didn't do as good a job on my side. So if we could have another meeting to look at it, that, that would be helpful. You know, how we, we've got a motion, I guess, on the table, so. And outside of that, yeah. So I guess you would have to approve the motion to delay it until essentially table till the next meeting. All right, we will do a roll call vote.
Schwartz.
Hi.
Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Hallers.
Aye.
Deacon.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Lester. Neely.
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, takes us to item seven, presentation from staff consultants invited guests. Can we? All right, we're going to item eight, announcements by mayor, council and staff. Well, Senzi had a couple things to bring us up to date on.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to make a couple announcements, one of which is May is Historic Conservation Month as well as Bike Month. Uh, so we decided to merge the two. We partnered with Parks, um, as well as Dave Benge from Public Works to do a historic community bike ride. Um, May 30th at 6:00 PM, we'll be starting off, um, between, in front of Cole County Historical Society and we'll be cycling and stopping, have a tour, um, along the Moro neighborhood. We'll go all the way to the Greenberry Homes and then cycle back. The, uh, my second announcement is the 2023 Draft Annual Action Plan for Community Development Block Ramps. Uh, we've put together a draft plan for our last, uh, year of our consolidated plan. We'll host a public meeting on June 1st, uh, at 4 o'clock PM in this room in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thanks. Administration committee, any, anything?
Uh, we have a meeting coming up next month. I'm not sure if we have anything on the agenda, but we'll keep everybody posted.
Finance committee?
Yeah, thank you. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, May 23rd at 8:00 in the morning across the hall. That is both a different day of the week and a different start time than normal. Uh, so mark your calendars accordingly. Thank you.
All right, public safety?
Uh, May 25th, 7:30 in the police training room.
Great, thanks. Public works?
Our next meeting will be June 8th at 7:30 here in the council chambers.
Any other comments, announcements? All right, we're going to jump to item 10, consent to jumping. So number nine, presentations from the gallery.
Close the office, start with Natalie Newville.
Yes, dear. Welcome. If you just tell us your name one more time for all our friends at home.
Hello, my name is Natalie Newville. I'm the president of the Downtown Association. Um, I've talked to a lot of you over the last couple of weeks. Uh, so we sent a statement to all of you, some of it I'm going to touch on tonight, but it is in your inbox or should be. We are here tonight to present and protect the interest in this downtown traffic flow of downtown. Keeping 90-minute parking as it is with better signage that is clear would be our perfect solution. Making the parking spots 90 minutes per spot is a step forward in the current conversation that we're having. We are open to continuing to work with the council and city staff to alleviate all concerns regarding parking downtown. Some immediate asks that, um, our group has come up with or some ideas that we have to address these issues. Signs with more straightforward parking instructions, including more of them in downtown. We have some suggested verbiage that I did send out to everybody. Um, 90-minute parking per space per day, Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. And then obviously there are some spots have different time limits. They're 10 minutes, 15 minutes. So whatever that time limit is in that location. Um, we are opposed to any future placement of parking meters on High Street. Downtown worked with the city very hard about 20 years ago, um, to get those parking meters removed. We feel like it really helps our businesses and, um, keeps where people are wanting to come downtown. Um, as far as the current proposal that passed out of the committee, uh, last week, um, we are opposed to eliminating the parking enforcement vehicles in downtown. Um, if the city council decides that that is something that they feel is a priority, we would like to see that elimination only happen in the 100, 200 and 300 blocks of High Street. Um, we feel like other enforcement would suffer not having those vehicles because the downtown district is such a large district. We also included some future suggestions, um, bigger things to continue the conversation. Um, and again, those are all emailed out to everybody, so I'm not delaying this meeting, going over them. But basically, biggest part is we would really like to see short-term parking. Uh, we would really like to continue to work with everybody in this, um, discussion. There's a lot of downtown people that we have here, a lot of business owners and a lot of supporters, um, and people that have the moratorium exposed their businesses. So we would like to see that moratorium end and enforcement sort of again. So happy to answer any questions.
West? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we've got some other names that have signed up, so we'll go down the list. Don Kehoe?
Oh, good. Mike West is busy.
Okay. Becky Kehoe?
She's gone. She left.
All right. Lori? Sorry, my last name. No.
Noel or Noel.
Noel. All right, former mayor Turgeon, I hear it up next. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for bringing me out of retirement for the night. And I have some. I've got pictures too. So thank you, Carrie Turgeon, owner of Carrie's Hallmark Shop. My parents named it after me 46 years ago. I'm a third-generation downtown business owner. And I have some solutions that I'd like to suggest, and that would be to change the wording on the signage and to add more signs. I agree that a zone can be a confusing reference, which is what the ordinance says. So per block or space probably makes more sense. I have some photos on the screen. This first one of these photos were taken before the trash bags were placed over them. So this photo says 30-minute parking. It shows the difference of our parking dynamic in the downtown. This is in front of one of our banks that prefers more turnover. A second photo is in front of city hall, so we can advance to the next one. So city hall in fact has this parking sign from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, letting people know that they can park here for our evening meetings. And across on the other side of the street, thank you, the other side of the street says visitor parking and police business only is listed in a sign on Monroe Street, for example. So those signs are advisory and they simply clarify parking intentions, much like this one that says enforcement is done at 7:00 AM or, I'm sorry, two-hour parking, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM during times when there is an enforcement. This third photo is the post office downtown, 15-minute parking. Interestingly, Saturday, I'm sorry, Sunday through Saturday for 24 hours a day. So, uh, one proposed change could be to change this to 15-minute parking Monday through Saturday during post office hours to allow people know they can park there and eat Aris's pizza or stroll to Capitol in the evening. But again, they won't get a ticket anyway for the 24 hours. And this is a good indication that that should be for, uh, for the post office anyway. This next photo is the 100 block in front of my store. So you can see if you're in this vicinity, you don't know that you can park for 90 minutes or what the intentions are. So we just need more signage, increasing that signage. This photo is the current signage that's on there, 90-minute parking from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM except Sunday. And then the visitor and customer parking only. So that's the current signage. And then I have a few, um, variations. This first one is simply to clarify the current situation, which is 90 minutes per day per block, Monday through Saturday. That's what we would currently have if we changed it to mirror what our current ordinance says. This next one is the same thing, per block per day. It just adds the 8 to 5 for Monday through Saturday. And this is another idea, the per day, Monday through Saturday. If you really want to simplify it, this is just another option for your short-term parking. If we go to the per day option, it does kind of eliminate some of the spot hopping. Owners and, and employees still could park there for the first 90 minutes, of course, same with our customers and visitors. But this just encourages a little bit more of our intentions for having more turnover and more spots available. And this last one is per space Monday through Saturday, which is what the Downtown Association has suggested, although their suggestion is Monday through Friday to mirror what council has suggested. Regardless of what option is chosen, my ask would be that you please get, ask and get some input from customers just to make sure this is clear for them. They're the end user. So talking to us, we have experience as downtown business owners, but I think talking to some customers would be very helpful to show them the different options and make sure that it's clear to them. As for the parking enforcement vehicles in section three, the speed limit's already 20, so traffic should be proceeding slowly anyway. And cars, parallel parking naturally slows down the traffic. Um, and our customers know that finding a spot is usually the difference for them stopping and enjoying our downtown shopping. Otherwise, they go on. A customer told me today that it's much more difficult for her to do business in the downtown and it's easier to go somewhere else. So having these spots open that people feel comfortable finding one is important because they may not come back again. And having 90 minutes with no meters in the vicinity of downtown produces revenue. And it's important that that revenue goes back in the city in our sales tax. It pays for rent, property tax, employee salaries and other investments into the city from visitors and locals alike. So keeping turnover existing is an opportunity for businesses to survive in areas like the downtown in an area with a mix of very large office population, just like the Jefferson Building and Governor Office Building where High Street is closer than their designated parking. So when it comes to revenue loss, which I've been asked about, I would say if you, um, you ask me, have I lost revenue? So let's say that I haven't. And if you truly believe that, then I would encourage you to pass a resolution to cover any revenue loss from the businesses. That's a potential solution for you. What's most disturbing is that government knows best in telling me how to run my business. So I would say that the downtown knows the best way that we as business owners should run our business. So please get our input and next time we would really appreciate that. Thank you. Any questions?
That was a good job.
Thank you. Yes.
All right.
That current sign up there, per, per, uh, per space, could it move up one space and then that's another 90 minutes? Am I hearing that right?
Correct.
So that is just for that space, 90 minutes, they move up one and it's space hopping.
Correct. That's why I do still prefer the per day, per block version, but I understand the per space, I, I see that, that people would move forward. This is, this is the option where they would move forward. You, you technically could move forward in every day, every spot you could move up and still be there long-term and be there almost a whole day.
So with the Saturday, even though we probably don't do enforcement Saturday, then let's them know that, hey, you know, this is good except for Sundays, but they, it, it would get in their mindset. Uh, I only got 90 minutes today on Saturday. I was like, technically could get a ticket. But it helps, it helps turnover too by doing that, right?
Correct. It does help turnover and a lot of the signage, and it's the distinction between the enforcement piece, which is important, but also just that signs give direction. And I happen to be open Saturdays along with a lot of us. I'm also open on Sundays. And interestingly, on Saturdays, a lot of employees know, well, they're not enforcing, I'll just come out. That's why we added the visitor and customer, why we added Saturdays years ago, so that we know the intention is not for our employees. And even residents would sometimes creep up to High Street on Saturdays, even though they have spots in the back. So this is more of direction and intention. Like I noted, other places that may have 24 hours of, of, um, policy, but that's not enforced. And we don't think it should be enforced, but we think it's helpful direction for customers.
Councilman Schwartz? One of your suggestions was, in, in case of revenue loss for your business, that we should use taxpayer money to pay you?
Uh, businesses in general, it's a suggestion.
Your business owners should pay you.
Oh, I'm putting that out as if you don't think that businesses have lost revenue, that's an option. If you want to supplement the revenue that's lost by changing the policy and not providing parking for their customers. Because if businesses don't have parking for customers, they won't survive.
How do you, how do you quantify your business loss with the loss of parking?
I think that would be up to you to find out. Because you can't quantify what you lose when those people, I, I mentioned that sometimes they'll just keep going. So it is hard to quantify that because there are people that drive by and they'll say, well, I didn't find a spot, so I didn't come by. I went somewhere else. So we as downtown business owners, and I'm using that as an example to show you when I say the revenue loss, because you specifically had asked that at the public works meeting. So I wanted to put that out there and that as business owners, we do, uh, have the several people that will not stop if there's not a space. And if they get in that habit, like right now, when it's busy and there aren't a lot of spots and a lot of turnover, they may not come back next time.
So you lose $10,000 year-over-year. We have no idea why. You blame it on parking. The government should supplement you for that.
I didn't say that. What I said is if you truly believe that there's not a revenue loss, that this policy would not cause a revenue loss, that eliminating parking, what you all did at that previous council meeting under new business, not talking to any downtown businesses and basically cutting off enforcement and saying you can park there all day. And then Councilman Schwartz, you asked at the public works meeting about revenue loss specifically several times. So that's merely a suggestion.
To take taxpayer money and give you, the business owner, I'm making sure I got this right. You want us to take taxpayer money to give to you for a revenue loss that you can't quantify as being for parking company?
Well, we can debate that a little bit farther if you'd like. It's an example of what I think is a, is an unfortunate um, measure that you have placed on this, that revenue loss is something that you clearly were asking us about at the public works meeting. And so I've come here to counter that and say that if you don't think there's revenue loss, which there will be and, and it's going to take, and we can, we can spend some time on revenue loss. I think that's something that's very important, but.
I'm just asking you about your suggestion.
But with more time and if you kept your current policy, which is not enforcement and basically all day free-for-all and park long-term all day, that will hurt your businesses and they will suffer revenue loss. And we can quantify that. We do have numbers that we could get deeper and quantify. Some of the lost revenue we'll never know because if it's full, they don't ever stop there. But we could certainly get into that farther and without the turnover, businesses lose. So I'm using this as an example.
Wouldn't you agree that if our constituents are getting tickets or people that are visiting and spending money, maybe in that year or four, are getting tickets inappropriately or maybe even illegally, that that should stop immediately?
I think the current policy that is 90 minutes that's on the books, while some people come back the second time in the day and they get a ticket, they don't really realize why. I think there is ways that we can eliminate that. I think with more signage and better signage, that can be done. Like I said, people park here and may or may not see, uh, these signs and what the policy is. But I think that the illegal part, I guess, would be something that maybe Counselor Mollman can clarify what's being done illegally. But if people are getting caught in the coming back later in the day and not happy about that, that's understandable. The reason we did it is so that employees don't play the system. That's why that policy was enacted several years ago by the Downtown Association. But certainly if, if, I don't think that there necessarily be anything illegal about that, but maybe just unwanted and people not wanting to get those tickets.
Yeah, I mean, I'm of the persuasion that if somebody is getting a ticket because maybe our signage is messed up or it's not explainable to a rational person who's wanting to do business downtown, then that's something the city should take care of immediately. And I think that's why the resolution was brought up and passed without any discussions, because we wanted to stop the long line of the law from finding people who are trying to do business in our city immediately. And we did that. And here we are 12 days later, getting ready to modify it to what I think is to, uh, move down the road to fix the moratorium and probably end the moratorium if this is passed in 12 days. And so I don't think, I don't think it's productive to come in here and, you know, expect the taxpayer. expect the taxpayer to pay you for a perceived revenue shortage based on no quantitative data that he can bring or show.
Councilwoman Miller. You can respond.
Question.
You can respond.
Okay, so to respond to that, because you asked about that people don't know what the expectation is, the sign, this is the current sign, actually it's covered up by trash bag, but the current sign under the trash bag says ninety-minute parking, eight to five, except Sunday. So, the intention is people know they are to park there for ninety minutes, so if they park there longer than ninety minutes, they will get a ticket. So, the ninety-minute piece, now, the, the few people that leave and come back, and I believe that is an issue, that's why we want to change into the per day, you know, just simply clarify per day, per block, and this actually is a little more fitting for what is the current policy. The current policy works, if you want the turnover, which we do, per day, per block, simply changes it. So, currently, eight to five except Sunday, if you simply change it per day, per block, then it is more clear and it does follow what the current ordinance is. So, I hope that answers that.
I don't disagree with you, but the signage has been incorrect, and we needed to stop people from inappropriately getting tickets immediately, which is why, I mean, I, there's been a lot of innuendo about the council taking action, uh, just on a whim, without any conversation with folks downtown. I'm downtown all the time, I spend a lot of time downtown. We don't do this with malicious intent to hurt business, that's not the intention of this, what the intention was, is to stop that immediately and to come to a different solution, whether it's that sign, whether it's what Mr. Green wrote up at the Public Works Committee, which is one space is its own zone, whatever, that was the reason why the moratorium happened. And I understand if you want to come here and, and say this was a rash decision based on no discussions with anybody, I say, there's been discussions about parking going on for years, even while you were mayor. And nothing was done to stop folks getting tickets inappropriately, and I think that's what we've done.
Anytime issues came up, we would talk with staff, it was a rare occasion, but when it did, staff was able to help the constituents. I had several meetings with people who had a parking issues, we tried to find, if you're getting frequently ticketed because you are coming back multiple times on High Street, is there a way that we can find you a spot more long-term where you won't get those tickets? And staff was always extremely accommodating anytime that that happened.
I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying that, I think, if, if, if you go back on your slide, if I'm, if I'm coming here from St. Louis to go to the Capitol and I see that sign, that means I got ninety minutes to park in that zone, it doesn't say zone anymore, I got ninety minutes to be in that spot, period. And if I leave and come back, my ninety minutes isn't enough, and I get a ticket, that's inappropriate, in my opinion.
So, clarifying it, which I agree, and I'm glad that you agree that the, and I agree with you, and you mentioned the per day, per block, that, that, I mean, that does clarify it further. So, if someone doesn't live from out of town or wherever they would know, or, or whatever's decided, I prefer this one.
Thank you, Claire.
Councilwoman Miller?
Yeah, thank you. Seeing a bunch of business owners here, I first would just like to apologize for my decision at the last council meeting. Had about ten minutes to figure it out, others had a number of days, I don't know how much time, but I think it's something that we certainly should do is involve businesses when we make a decision that impacts business, and I like that the word taxpayer is being brought up, because I think the whole thing's a waste of taxpayer money, frankly. I came to council promising work to residents, and I was going to work on infrastructure, and here we are arguing with business owners about downtown parking. I mean, that's all, yeah.
Councilwoman Spencer?
I'll echo some of the comments that colleague Councilwoman Schwartz has brought up. But this is really fast-tracked, I think, a solution to the disingenuous enforcement with, with what our current ordinance is and what the signage is not or is currently. And I just think that, you know, I appreciate Councilman Hensley's approach on this, to, to mirror those two together. I just can't believe that a downtown area would condone something that's not honest as, as it relates to enforcement. We don't enforce on Saturday, so why do we want to communicate that we do? I mean, I get, I get the understanding that you want to create, still create that turnover, but I don't want to be a part of any policy or any lack of enforcement or over-enforcement that does not mirror the ordinance and our signage. And that's why I had brought that up as a moratorium on a Monday. It wasn't days that we had a discussion on this. So, um, I just, I guess I'd like a response from you on why you would like to continue this, this disingenuous enforcement that we don't provide on Saturday.
Well, I believe that it is important that there's turnover, that High Street is for a turnover area, even on Saturdays. Even on Saturdays, most of your businesses and restaurants are open that need the turnover, so it should not be considered long-term, even on weekends. So, there are many signs in town that are intentions, it doesn't mean you will be fined or ticketed. Even the visitor and customer parking only, I, I believe that is very appropriate, although business owners can park there too. Customers and visitors are, are intention, but employees can park there. Same with the post office, it says for post office only, same with on Monroe where it says police business only on the street parking. Same with over here, next to City Hall, those are intentions, it's sometimes signage is for clarity and clarifying. If you want to put on here, uh, don't worry about it, we're only going to give you a ticket Monday to Friday, but truly, Saturday is also a day that we would prefer turnover, however you want to word it, if you want to make it a paragraph, that's fine. But I think it is important that we as downtown can say Saturdays are important for us as well. So, this mirrors what the intention of a lot of businesses that are open on Saturdays here would need.
So, and to follow up a little bit, um, business owners, even including yourself, can't really quantify an amount of support that you are losing because of the moratorium. We, we can quantify what the expense would be to have enforcement on Saturday. So, would the Downtown Business Association like to pony up to cover those expenses to have that enforcement?
Um, you can talk with the post office and see if they want to pony up for twenty-four hour, whatever their sign says.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not asking about the post office, I'm talking about the downtown.
Well, if you're going to talk about signage and if we're going to do what our signs say, that's why I have these examples. So, you can pick on just the downtown, like you are, it's only the unmetered, and I understand that, it's only High Street, it's only in front of my business for a few blocks, it's only the unmetered. But if we're talking about the, all the examples I have up here that are unmetered, I think it's important to look at that as a whole. Like I said, signage sometimes is an intention, this is intended for customer parking.
Signage is not an intention, signage is a direction, signage is an understanding, just like you say, see exit sign, that's not saying, well, maybe that's an exit, maybe it's not. No, it's an exit, so signage is supposed to be very direct and very understandable for anybody that is reading the signage. So, it's not, doesn't have this vague of intentions, that is, I, I don't know where you could feel comfortable with that approach.
Well, I would say you don't understand the dynamic of having a business in the downtown. Again, this is government, you as a councilperson telling me, you know what's best for running my business. I can tell you, as a business owner that's open on Saturdays, it is important, there's a reason the Downtown Association asked the city to change the signage to Monday through Saturday, even though it's not enforced on Saturday. It's simply an intention that customers, it's supposed to be for customers even on Saturdays, that's just for us. If you don't like the sign and you want downtown, invest in our own signs that say we prefer customers, whatever, I, I don't know what you need from us.
Well, just real quickly, I resent the fact that you think that I am personally and intentionally trying to harm the downtown. That is incorrect, I'm a business owner for twenty-eight years, so the downtown is just not the sole Mecca of economic engine for Jefferson City. Eastside businesses, westside businesses, northside businesses, southside businesses are also a very important backbone of our economic engine in this community. So, I, I would appreciate that acknowledgement.
I understand, but I will also counter that, with the downtown is an area that you actually have to use more difficulty and get fined or pay in many cases in order to do business there, unlike some of the other places that you mentioned. And since we have those challenges, that's why we have the no meters there, coming out of that, coming out of the extra challenges and limited parking and harder than it is to do business for owners to actually put their business there and for customers sometimes to do business there.
But don't you think...
All right, we're going to jump to Councilwoman Hensley.
Just, just real quick, I'm sorry.
Right, okay, fine.
Just real quick, I mean, don't you think the best enforcement tool though is meters?
No, clearly opposed meters, I think that it is very important that customers have the ninety-minute option to come and do business downtown without paying to have to do that. This is the only business area that they are able to do that, that they have to pay in order to do business, most of the business districts you do not. And the point of the revenue that's produced from that free spot for ninety minutes, I mean, it costs after the ninety minutes with a ticket, they'll get a ticket there. So, I'm not saying not to ticket, I'm simply saying that's a reason that, that there are no meters there, because those spots produce revenue. And you asked Councilwoman Spencer at the Public Works meeting, should we even expand that, and perhaps. I think if there are revenue-producing areas that currently have meters that maybe shouldn't, so that people can go and spend their money there and turn that extra, those coins, or higher return if you can get the taxpayer dollars that are spent on merchandise and food and other things and shopping rather than on meters.
So, we're going to Councilwoman Hensley.
Thank you, uh, I have a whole series of questions to go through with staff once we actually get to this item on the agenda on the next page. Uh, uh, hey Kara, can you advance to what the green signs look like, yeah, that one right there?
This is the current.
Thank you, uh, Matt, uh, I asked in an email a question, actually about the blue sign, and you said that that was a non-regulatory sign, is that right?
Yeah, it's typically a color code of signs, uh, so I've perfectly followed everywhere, but we tried our best in blue. If you drive down a highway and see a blue sign, it's kind of giving you direction, information.
But the green and white, or the white sign with the green markings on it, is that a regulatory sign or a non-regulatory sign?
Usually regulatory is the black and white sign.
So, what is the green and white sign?
Exactly, uh, I'm, this is my train of thought, but I think typically it's, it's somewhat informational as well, like say, street sign. There are a lot, you see a lot of green and white street signs or down a highway, you see green and white.
I'll need to learn more regulatory versus non-regulatory means, because the, the language on these signs marking these zones, and is it on a per-spot basis that this is listed, I mean, that's, I mean, that's all in the review, but if you say ninety-minute parking except Sunday, do you think the reasonable person would look at that as, as ending it, or else, like, or else maybe you might get a ticket?
Uh, I would think so.
So, it operates, I would say, in sort of a regulatory manner, right?
Correct.
Okay, it doesn't say ninety-minute parking unless you want to park longer?
Right.
So, I think that it does operate as a regulatory sign, even if it's not black and white. And I think that the expectation that people reading that sign is that this is the limitation for this zone, and this is all the limitation for this zone. So, for instance, saying except Sunday, and giving the impression that you are also regulated on Saturdays, I mean, obviously it doesn't tell the entire story, and there, I mean, there are considerable additional problems with this sign that we'll get into, I don't know, sometime after midnight perhaps, but, um, but the ninety-minute parking, eight AM to five PM, is not a suggestion.
Right.
That's not up to, part of that section of people, yeah, right, and you get ticketed if you would see it.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions, our next, Kara Stark? Welcome.
Hi everyone, thank you for having us. I know you guys are probably a little tired by now, so I won't try to make this too long.
Nope, you take your time.
Um, but my name is Kara Stark, I am the owner of Cork and Board Downtown. I'm also the Senior Legislative Director at Colsonelli, although I am not here in that capacity. I just say that to say that I've been looking at policies since 2016, so love looking at all the language. Um, I'm also the Vice President of the Downtown Board Enforcement, so soon to be a President, so maybe I'll become a familiar face to some of you. My husband would have been here, but he's at home taking care of our year and a half old, so I'll speak on behalf of Cork and Board tonight. Um, I am not going to stand up here and say that Cork and Board as a business has seen a lot of negative impact from this moratorium. Uh, we open at three, so, um, you know, our business is not one of the ones that's most directly impacted by how this moratorium has worked. But I did just want to say something about how this policy was created, and then I'd also like to talk about some of the next steps forward, including some of the language, um, that is being proposed. So, first off, kind of about how the policy was created, now, I know that, um, Councilwoman Schwartz, you just mentioned, uh, and I just wanted to bring this up, you just mentioned that, um, this was created specifically to stop the tickets from happening, and I understand that. I was raised by a libertarian, I was raised by two, maybe, although my dad cares less. So, um, you know, we don't believe in the government necessarily taking our money, but I will also say that we heard at several meetings that councilmen had done this as a way to, um, send both legislators that have been in town and city staff and everyone a message. And my concern with policies that are created to send a message is that oftentimes I do believe they're reactionary, and they don't take into account the impacts they could have. I found in my work studying and advocating for policies since 2015, being a high school debater and loving policies since I, before I had braces, that reactionary policy is rarely an effective way to address perceived problems in a system. I much prefer data points that help identify what caused that problem from the beginning. And I know that we had a lot of conversation here about how the Downtown Association and the businesses downtown are bringing no data, but also, we didn't hear any data presented to us when this was kind of brought up out of the blue, right? We don't know how many people are actually receiving tickets because they've parked there twice in one day. We don't know what exorbitant amount of tickets has been written, we didn't hear any data presented to help support this policy. So, when you ask us for data, we'd like to ask you back, give us data. You know, we, we do understand that this maybe is not the best sign, and we believe that changes can be had, but reactionary policy is not the way to go about those changes, kind of in our opinion. Um, the second thing I'd like to do is comment on this process moving forward. What the Downtown Association would like is transparency and just to seat at the table, or at least have our input heard in future parking, um, decisions that directly impact the businesses within our district. I understand concern when verbiage on the sign doesn't match the code or policy, that type of thing literally makes my skin crawl. So, I understand that there is need for change with this, um, and, but we, but we believe that an appropriate action, or I believe that an appropriate action would be correcting the verbiage and not putting it in a moratorium that doesn't necessarily serve to advance a solution to this problem, because we don't believe that the moratorium has served to advance a solution. So, I'd just like to reiterate the downtown request, that the signs reflect more straightforward parking instructions with the suggested verbiage we provided, that we do not consider parking meters on High Street, and that we ensure that enforcement of parking downtown continues. So, for instance, when I was kind of reading through some of the suggested language that I think will come up in an amendment today, it said that while monitoring parking compliance or issuing citations for parking violations, city staff shall operate in a manner that minimizes destruction of traffic flow and minimizes utilization of parking space by a staff motorized vehicle. I understand what that's saying, I read policy, I help enact policy, but I think it's a little bit too vague, and I have some concerns with how that's crafted. So, our suggestion, like we said, would be if you don't like the vehicles downtown, to maybe encourage that, or to write policies that would have those parking people just do the one hundred, two hundred and three hundred blocks of downtown by foot, and then they can use their vehicles in the rest of the downtown district to ensure that enforcement is continuing to happen. I have fifteen seconds left, so I talked way longer than I thought it would, and I'm happy for any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next name, I believe, Joe? Name, like the last name is Darkswood, S, maybe?
S H.
Mr. Plummer?
Not sure, I appreciate the inflection of that, Mayor. My name's Gary Lummer, I work for the Chamber of Commerce, we're two thirteen Adams. I didn't come here tonight with any ideas on how to tweak what came out of the public works last week. Quite frankly, uh, it's pretty obvious to me that I haven't had the time or the opportunity to talk about what came out of the public works very well. I'll be heard to the Downtown Merch Association if they have some tweaks that they're recommending. I'm not here to suggest any tweaks. We did submit a letter to Public Works, our maintenance room for about the process, and also about the desire to try to end the moratorium ASAP. And so I'm grateful for the efforts by the Public Works Committee, and I think a lot of the folks here tonight to try to do exactly that, get past this moratorium period as soon as possible and move on. Obviously, it's had some impact downtown, and we just think the sooner we can end it, the better. So I want to thank everybody for their efforts to try to expedite this. That's all that I have.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Good job?
Thank you.
All right, that's all the names we had on the list. Was there anybody else that wanted to speak on this issue during this part of the agenda? I saw Mr. Green stand first, and Miss Allen. You're welcome.
My name is Matt Green, and I am actually really happy to be here tonight. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to critique and judge, uh, the people that we elect. Um, I started out the Public Works Committee meeting last Thursday with all of the good things that came from this moratorium. Um, I'm gonna start out a little bit differently tonight. Uh, when I heard about the moratorium and what all it affected, I really thought that it was a joke. Like, someone was joking with me, like, no way, eight to nine? I couldn't believe it. Um, I, I was really shocked. Uh, I have some really nice thoughtful emails, uh, that some of my friends and peers, uh, downtown business owners that have sent to me. Um, I will read them all, uh, I'll just tell you who they're from. Uh, this one is from Derek and Tricia Baker. Uh, they're the new owners of Platon Pork Bakery down on the eastern end of the downtown area. Uh, one of them is from Jim Dyke, who, uh, says he's been here for three decades in the downtown area. Uh, another one is from, uh, George Pardalis, who some of you may know, uh, owns a little business here in town called Ares's. Um, and then this is a list of, uh, other downtown patrons and business owners, um, who are not able to quantify any losses that they have, uh, encountered over the last week or twelve days or whatever. I don't really think we've had any losses over the last week, because as I stated in the Public Works meeting, no one even knows about the moratorium. The more people that I talked to after that meeting, still no one knew about the moratorium. Um, so I'm not incredibly convinced that we are seeing any impacts, but once the word is out, I think the impacts will be detrimental, which I think all of you know. And unfortunately, this part of the meeting didn't, uh, come up after the decision to accept new policy or to end the moratorium, maybe this would be shorter. Um, but I'm just gonna go through a list of, uh, this is a really simple petition that just doesn't have any other point other than they think these people, these business owners think that, um, their businesses were negatively impacted by the moratorium or will be negatively impacted. Um. River City Forest, Carriage Hallmark, Central Bank, Barbino Bar Whiskey, High Rise Bakery, Downtown Book and Toy, Podstone Gallery, we mentioned, uh, we mentioned him earlier, I Cor Vintage, Unique Creations, Pizza Underground, American Shoe, High Street Pub, The Back Drop, uh, Madison's, The Grand Cafe, Coffee Zone, Sweet Smoke Barbecue, Red Meal Bike Shop, Cork and Board, Yo Yums, and Whalons. Um, there might be a few, uh, a few on here that I missed, uh, but that's the, that's the names that I can come up with, uh, that's just a little bit of work, uh, kind of trolling the downtown area. Um, that's really all I have to say. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Questions?
Councilman Neil. Yeah, thanks for being here. So the business, as I think you just mentioned, were those all folks who experienced some sort of, had some sort of concern with the, the way this all happened?
Yep, yep. Uh, I, I do not know that, I do not know the answer to that. Um, I'll just read the title of this, uh, petition, just to clarify what they signed off on and how I sold this was, do you think this is gonna be bad for business? We, the undersigned voters in Jefferson City, submit our names of objection to the unrestricted parking in downtown Jefferson City. As business owners and residents of downtown Jefferson City, we believe this will hurt the economy in downtown Jefferson City, furthermore, putting our businesses at risk of failure. So that's what they signed up for. Uh, there were a few that I've missed that I should have written in, because I didn't have a chance to actually sign. Um, but, uh, I do think, uh, fast-tracking and fixing the problem that I think was intended to fix was really important. Um, but I do feel like as fast as we taped trash bags over the signs, we could have just as easily taped, corrected, laminated signs over top of them and not affected any one's business or, uh, or ruffling feathers, so to speak. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak? Uh, I'm sorry, Miss Allen had already raised her hand. And then, you want to speak next? Thanks.
Thanks.
Welcome.
And I'm just coming as a Jefferson City resident, someone who shops downtown.
Could you just?
Julia.
Thank you.
Sorry. Um, and I do appreciate, I know working on the city council is not an easy job, so I understand that. Um, a few things. First of all, as was spoken earlier, you know, somebody who's had a lot of experience developing policy, you don't develop policy to send messages to someone. And it is true, we have heard directly, that this was done to send messages for business sakes. If you have somebody that's an employee and you wanna send a message, figure out what I'm gonna do. I'm gonna tell you, this cannot be good for the city. And in fact, I find that horrifying. So, um, figure out how to treat your employees with respect, and if you have a problem, how to handle it with respect. Also, this is not a contest. It's really not about us versus you or the businesses versus you all, it shouldn't be. And somehow it's bound to be that way. So I would encourage everybody, just take a breath. You know, as a city official or any official, it's easy to feel attacked. But please realize, as an official, it's your job to keep your cool. Um, and so I would encourage that. Um, in, in reality, this was done without any notice, without any data. If there are tickets that were being given illegally, I'd like to see how many? If there were tickets giving done because there was confusion, how many? Sure, the signs can be improved, but the crisis seemed to come awful soon. I don't even think every council member was involved in discussion before all of a sudden there was testimony, this and that. So it comes off as some type of agenda. If you didn't mean it that way, okay, but that's the way it comes off. And the only way to fix that and start talking to each other is your job as council to talk to the people that you are affecting. And it should not be a let's test, or then the businesses will lose revenue or shut. For business sakes, that is almost a problem, that you're sitting there asking that. I mean, I'm offended, I'm not even a business owner, that you would be saying, well, have you lost business? How can you improve? That is not how as a council we should be handling ourselves. So please, respect, know that the business is very important to downtown. In the past few weeks, myself and my husband have been down here about four times. Three of the times, there was not parking in the area, and we went around the corner and found parking elsewhere. But that's because we want it to park there. You know, we want it to go anywhere we want. So I'm just encouraging you, quit having the rhetoric. Quit throwing in vamps about what the prior mayor did or did not do. I've heard it at least three times, it's unprofessional. It doesn't even matter, it's your all's job right now. I don't really care what happened before, I care what you're doing today. I do support you, even though you may not believe it, with me up here giving you some criticism. But I really do support the council, and I hope that you will move forward. And quit making this about other people. Do your jobs. And, you know, I think this will blow up if you do it and you work with other people. Thanks.
How much questions? Thanks very much. Okay, sorry. Can you just tell us?
Hi everyone, my name is Rachel Alexander, um, I own Yo Yums on High Street. Uh, my other job is I'm a research, um, researcher at the University of Missouri in the Med School. So I do understand the importance of data, I love data, um, I talk about it way too much in my personal life. Um, so because of that, um, I, what I did this past week when I heard about the moratorium was I decided to do a really unofficial survey of our customers at the shop. So I posted a, um, survey on our social media, on our Instagram and on our Facebook, and I put a bucket in our store, asking people, have you had trouble parking this week with the dates on it? Um, I got about a hundred and thirty-three responses, unfortunately, my phone died, so I can't read you some of them, which is what I wanted to do. But the, the data on it was around eighty percent said yes, they had trouble parking. About eight percent was, um, I'm guessing high schoolers, we get a lot of high schoolers in Yo Yums if you haven't been in, because they were total throwaway answers, like, um, one of them said something about pimping, which I don't even know, but then the rest were no. Um, so that was my very unofficial data, um, on this. But, uh, to echo the rest of the downtown business and people who talked is, I don't even think this is really about data. Um, as the other person, I can tell you when I decided where I wanted to live and what kind of business I wanted to own, um, that having a vibrant community, a vibrant economy, and a vibrant downtown was a huge component of that. That's one of the reasons I chose Jefferson City, right? Um, rather than all of the other options. And I think, as several of you have said, you're business owners, um, that you would be upset if you were a business owner and decisions were made for you and your customers without your input. Um, and I, I feel as a business owner downtown, that decision was made completely without our input, completely without any of our stakeholder buy-in, not just of us, but of our customers. Um, I had, I know one of the comments on my survey, which my phone was intent, was that they had circled around the block, they circled around about fifteen times, couldn't find parking, decided to go to a different ice cream shop that had parking. Um, so no, I don't have data on how much revenue they lost, but I do know that it's equating to lost revenue and that respect and that one customer I lost. Um, so yeah, I guess my big ask today here is, uh, one, that we can think about the verbiage that has been brought up, um, uh, for the signs. I do understand that there's a sign issue. Or even if you don't wanna immediately think about that, that maybe we actually do an official survey of our, of our population, right? Your job as city councilman is to let, or to represent the people. This is, I feel like it was representative of the customers, of the stakeholders. Um, it feels like it was, uh, a rash deserved reaction, and I understand that maybe that was not the intention. Um, and, but my hope is that you will fix that then. So thank you, and I'm open for questions or whatever.
Questions, comments? Councilman Neil?
Just a quick comment, I appreciate you bringing up data, um, I also work in data.
Okay.
So those, that'll be further in this meeting, um, maybe tomorrow, but.
Okay, awesome, yeah, data's great, so I'm all for it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Mary Alexander, and I am not a downtown business owner, I'm worse, I'm the parent of two downtown business owners, so I have seen the effects of this, um, over the last week. Um, prior to that, I will just say, uh, supporting kids that have businesses downtown, um, both Cork and Board and Yo Yums. Um, I have watched them, uh, Rachel didn't own Yo Yums during COVID, but Kara did own Cork and Board. And, um, during the shutdowns, as many of your business had, had to experience, and then through a bad economy, the way that downtown works so hard for the patronage they get, sit on High Street for a while and watch the work that those businesses put out to earn your business. That's not saying anything against any of the other businesses, I'm for businesses on the east side and the west side. I'm a Jeff City resident, my husband works in New York City, we have an apartment in New York City, but we make Jefferson City our primary residence because we love it, we're proud of it, and who wants to live in New York all the time, right? And so we love this community, and we love the downtown, and we love the vibrancy of the downtown. My concern was that this was brought forward not on an agenda. And I know that that's okay, that you can do that despite sunshine law, you know, kind of requiring otherwise. But I serve, I'm, I'm the president of the Board of Trustees for Lighthouse Preparatory Academy, I was the president of their board. I've also been a president of the American Diabetes Association, um, in Springfield, Missouri. And we always put our agenda out twenty-four hours ahead of time, because it allows the stakeholders to be able to have a say-so. Otherwise, decisions get made that are not in the best interest of the stakeholders. And then if they get voted down, everyone's had the opportunity to speak and to represent themselves, and the best decision emerges forward. When you don't have the stakeholders, you don't have the best decisions. And so that's my concern as a resident. It makes me think I need to be at city council meetings just to know, are, are there being things discussed that we don't know about? If I look at the agenda online, can I trust that that's actually what's being discussed or things being brought forward in addition to that? So I would just encourage you as a new council, a new mayor, I'm excited for you, I voted for a couple of you, I'm on Greenberry. Um, I would encourage you to have transparency in your government and transparency, and always allow the stakeholders that are affected by decisions to be in the room.
Thanks. I think I saw you get out, Mr. Plummer.
I'm Daryl Hubble, I live in, at Jefferson, six hundred block of Eastside. We are downtown, as most people like to think, about the three block, uh, square that may affect that. But your decision affects us as well, uh, we get to fall into that. Uh, I get much like maps, caught off guard, I'd been gone for a couple of weeks. Came back, saw some cars on the street that I recognized as being people that live in our block, who were on the street during business hours, wondered why they were there. Realized the signs had been bagged, and why ours got bagged and everybody else's didn't get bagged, what they did. So they immediately taken advantage of that. The, those two cars remain there for the entirety of your moratorium and probably will still be there until you remove the bags. That number is, today's drove to four. We have one parking space in front of our business that's available right now. The others were taken up by people that had businesses in that block, oddly enough, and people who live above those businesses but don't work. So I'm here to tell you, it's a terrible decision. When the city decided several years ago to redo our streets and to redesign them, we lost four parking spaces immediately in front of our business. We have nice, look good looking bump outs now. So we now reduced the number of parking spaces, so those, those two hour parking zones were important for us to maintain, because at that time, we had a number of people abusing it just like they are now. We were able to get that corrected, and those people miraculously found someplace else to park, very close to where they were. So I don't understand the decision, they expanded that to four hours now, and that's okay, because they can't be there all day. Our street, our parking space, we don't have parking spaces, because the city doesn't want us to line our street like they do everywhere else. So we don't have spaces, it's just open territory. So people can park cars if they want to, that crowd spaces. So, I don't understand the city when it makes decisions, it's been here fifty years, and this just makes no sense, I don't understand. Jack, I would appreciate you for responding to me, you're the only one who did, and so I hope you guys have a good common sense and share. And so I hope you guys have a good common sense and change.
Thank Councilman Hensley.
I don't have a question for you, sir. I appreciate you being here. I'm sorry about the situation in your block. This is questions for staff. There's a 72-hour limit on parking vehicles on the streets, right?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Under code?
Under code.
And we didn't suspend that? So that should not be affected by by the current suspension of the signs that are up there on the... Okay, so I'm sorry you're having that situation. My suggestion would be, if it's still there and you notice it, I would report that into public court staff, in the parking division maybe, or maybe the police department.
The police.
By use that code for that. Should not be as a result of this particular conversation. You should be able to have them towed by calling in a complaint if you need to.
Okay, anyone else? All right, thank you. We will move to item 10 consent agenda. Motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Great, item 11, bills introduce 2023-010.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to expedite agreement of corrective asphalt materials in the amount of $101,290 for the 2023 street seal coating project.
All right.
Thank you. Clerk indicated seal coat project with a corrective asphalt materials. This is something we've been doing the last several years now. But basically trying to go back and streets that were just received a overlay-type treatment, go back and seal those in the following year or two, and get those fine cracks sealed back in and help prolong the life of the streets. The list of streets is in here with the bill. She indicated the cost of a little over $100,000. Our whole overlay program this year is in the 1.6 million dollar range.
Questions? All right. Item 2023-011.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri designating 1310 Moreland Avenue as a local historic landmark.
I think Mrs. Sundays is doing this one.
Yes. The Historic Preservation Commission received a landmark award nomination for 1310 Moreland Avenue. The house at 1310 Moreland was built in 1927. Was built 1927 on lots owned by some of the city's original developers, Dr. Louis Ott and George Wagner. Ott and Wagner partnered to buy the Lincoln Farm, and this property was plotted in 1916. It's part of the subdivision, which I don't have the lines up, but the Fairmount Place subdivision also included Moreland and El Marine avenues, which are up on the map. The house itself is mission-inspired succo with a side gable roof and stepped parapets, which is an unusual feature for a home in the Jefferson City area. The home is not a timber construction, but has 11-inch-thick cement walls as part of its construction. Here's the picture of the back side. When reviewing properties for the landmark award, the Historic Preservation Commission utilizes the eligibility criteria stated in section 8-44 of the city code. This property met criteria as 1 through 4, 6, 7, and 8. Predominantly, the big criteria was its identification with a person or persons who significantly contributed to the development of the community, county, state, or nation. This person was Betty Goshorn-Weldon. She was born in 1922, passed away in 2007. Her father owned the News Tribune. When he passed, she took over and became publisher for nearly half a century. She was one of the first women to start a television station, which is KRCG. She's a founder of Callaway Hills Stable and founder of Callaway Hills Animal Shelter. Outside of the property, which would also be considered contributing, has a landscape, has a bridge over a dry creek that complements the back of the property along with the playhouse, which repeats the design of the home. This playhouse was home to stories of Betty Goshorn-Weldon, who as a child played there with her friends. Ms. Walden, who occupied the house from 1947 to 1956, was the future, inherited the News Tribune in the future. Here's a close-up view of that playhouse. The HPC unanimously approved, unanimously approved the recommendation of 1310 Moreland Avenue for consideration as the landmark award recipients. I'd be happy to answer any question.
Questions? Redja, thank you. Item C 2023-012, and you'll notice there's a check marked by this.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri indicating and discontinuing the rights applied within the city-owned portions of the MSP.
All right.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, this would just kind of blanket vacation throughout the city-owned property and MSP just to clean up any remaining unused right-of-way easements, things like that. Clear the title, if you will, for future property owners. And check mark B to meet a deadline to sell property to the primary care association.
Questions?
I do have a requested amendment to this ordinance. In section 2, at the very end of section 2, the word "subject to the easement retained" in section 2, I ask that that be stricken. There is no easement retained in section 2. It's a little bit of legacy language for when we do do vacations that have easements. Didn't want to create any confusion, subjecting this to easements that don't exist. So that would be a cleaner version, that'd be more helpful to the title insurance that anyone can buy the property. So I would request that prior approval, that that amendment be...
Before we do that, is there any other comments on it? We're gonna need to get it on the table.
I'll make a motion to amend.
You need to waive.
Oh, the check mark first.
You need to get the bill on the table, so just ask to waive the rules so we can address it tonight.
Okay. Ask that we suspend the rules to run this tonight, please.
An objection to that. Okay, now you have 2023-012 in front of you. Would you like to make an amendment, Council? Council?
Yes, based on recommendations from our dual-acting role. Mr. Moore.
We'll back up there. Clerk, get that adjustment.
Yeah, overhand again for third reading. An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri indicating and discontinuing the rights applied within the city-owned portions of the MSP.
We'll need a second for that.
A second.
All right, we've got amendment in a second. Any other discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. You now have that bill before you. Any other comments before we do a roll call? And you're gonna, you're gonna read it. All right, we're gonna do a roll call.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Hallers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
All right, thanks. That takes us to item 2023-013.
An ordinance amending chapter 22 regarding parking regulations.
Mr. Moore?
Yeah, I'll just give a quick summary of my reading of it, but basically, it's converting when we call out zones to basically a space limit instead of zone limit. And then, under the exceptions of when it's not enforced, it would add Saturdays to that. So right now, it only says Sunday. The new section gives some parameters on how staff may go about monitoring for compliance with the vehicles in the area. Talked to Ryan and some others about this, you know, and how we go about this. I'll just go ahead and throw those out for now. Seems to work. We can implement this fairly readily, I believe, for unmetered spaces. And what we would interpret as checking, like some feature on the car, like a valve stem, so we know it's not the same spot. It adds a little more detail to it. What we do is take out the license plate number of the vehicle and tag that, and then we would know if it moved or not. The only problem with this and metered zones would be our parking app that we've recently instituted. That's per block. We're trying to get a hold of our app developer. They're a little hard to get a hold of, because they're electronic with them. But they, our app is not geographic, like I can order my Starbucks coffee from, knows where I'm at. This app is not that smart. It basically looks at a number that's been assigned to a block and knows that that number is associated with Jefferson City, so it takes you right there instead of some other city. There are no duplicate numbers in this system. Just was in Clayton, I was telling. And they have the same parking app, but I can put their number in there, and it knows what block I'm on in Clayton. So that's how that kind of works. So that would be, it may be an easy fix. I just don't know yet. We'll have to get some feedback from our app developer on metered spaces, though. Of course, there's still the meter you could use and do it that way. But we have trains. Several people use our app now. As far as enforcement vehicles, you know, I recommend if asked, we could do this in like the street scape area where the street has been narrowed. I think we can do the foot control in that small area. Maybe park the vehicles either in our garage or perhaps in a loading zone or something for a short time while we traverse the block. Some of the further out would be a little difficult for our staff to traverse that far, take a long time. You know, we could rerun spaces over by Lincoln, the high school, so I wouldn't think that would be the intention of this. But just wanted to point that out. Happy to answer your questions.
Just to piggyback on that, so I know that there's some suggested language for section 3 on the parking, the gate or the vehicles. I do have an alternative suggestion, and it's kind of twofold there. The first suggestion is, I don't think it's necessary for this to go into the code. And specifically, I don't think it's necessary for the city council to weigh in on this in any official manner. Myself is the administrator. Mr. Marash is the public works director. We hear you. There's a problem. I would say the better solution, I think, is let us fix it. If there's still a problem in a couple of months, let's go talk about, you know, putting something down in paper. But I think this is a situation that we think we can fix at a staff level, and that if we are afforded some flexibility and a little bit of a chance to be nimble, that we could fix this in a way that is going to be satisfactory to the city council. If not, we want to hear about it, and we can talk about some language. I really do think that having some code language or even specific language on how to do this in a very directory way is a step that we don't need to go to right now. We're committed to making this right. Give us a chance to make it right. And if we don't, you know, we can have another discussion, but we're confident that we can fix this this particular topic with some flexibility and some nimbleness.
When you're speaking specifically on the enforcement.
Specifically only on section 3, yeah, not the finesse piece, just the use of the vehicles.
Right. We're gonna turn it to the bill sponsor, Councilman Spencer. I know you may want to bring in Councilman Hensley since he's drafted this, but I'll give you the opportunity to make the first comments.
Well, I think from our perspective, we was just trying to make sure that we can have a continuous flow of traffic up on High Street in those narrow streetscapes. I've witnessed it several times going to meetings downtown is that the enforcement vehicle was blocking traffic or backlogging traffic behind those vehicles. You see the opportunity of people trying to lurch and look and see if they can make the speedway pass those vehicles. And work. We just think that that creates a whole other issue. But, you know, I think we're not, it wasn't ever my intention to, you know, park those vehicles and never use them again. But there are some blocks where our parking staff enforcement can make those, you know, patrols on foot, park the vehicle nearby, and do it as efficiently as they can. So I'll yield, for as much time to Councilman Hensley, but I would be supportive of your approach to try to get the best out of him possible.
Councilman Hensley?
Yeah, I agree. And if you would like to suspend the rules and bring in that witness or amendment.
Do you care to suspend the rules on this bill?
I would suspend the rules for that.
Any objections to this bill tonight? Hearing that, Councilman Hensley?
Okay, thank you.
That would be good. Thank you.
An ordinance amending chapter 22 regarding parking regulations.
Yeah, with Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. I have an amendment to propose, and it has two parts. And before I say that, I will thank Councilman Lester for his very thoughtful work on coming up with modified language to suggest in lieu of what we currently have in section 3 in the packet. But again, I appreciate Ryan's comments and trust his leadership to, over the next weeks, corporate staff to arrive in a very clear understanding of expectations and practices. So I would move that we amend bill 2023-013 by striking section 1 and section 3 from the existing bill and renumbering the existing or the remaining paragraphs accordingly.
I would accept that.
All right, we've got an amendment and a second on the floor. Are you comfortable? All right, discussion, Councilman Hallers.
I hate to reiterate this, but I couldn't hear where.
Could you just clarify the...
Section, which...
You have it in front of you?
Yeah, but I still couldn't hear.
No, he's gonna do it.
So if you're looking at the bill when you're right down here? Yeah, I could hear your voice. That was fine.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's fine. Sections 1 and 3, 1 relates to the metered blocks, and 3 relates to where to park vehicles. Sorry, where to park enforcement vehicles. I think all of this relates to where to park vehicles. Where to park enforcement vehicles, those three sections would be removed from this bill, and we would only move forward with what is currently numbered, section 2, which would become section 1.
Could you just summarize for people that get on read, they're not sure what to address?
Yeah, the only thing that'll be left in this bill is the section relating to the unmetered parking zones that was in the original bill. And all we're doing is making ordinance for the moment match the current signs. That's it. And it just, I mean, we are also adding Saturdays, making it clear that we don't enforce on Saturdays because we don't enforce on Saturdays. But that's it. It's... Where is it here? Yeah, so it would keep in place the time limit. It would add the specificity that the time limit applies to parking within the same parking space. It adds Saturdays and prior to Sundays. And it removes the final two lines, which read, nor shall a vehicle be parked within the same time limit zone as determined on a block-by-block basis more than once per calendar day, except Sundays. So again, it just would have, it would have ordinance match the current signs.
Comments? Councilman Neely?
So I think we saw this example earlier where keeping 2, and thank you for your work on this, keeping 2 would create the environment where you can park in one spot for the determined amount of time. And then if you wanted to move a spot, you would start that, whatever that time is, which would presumably be the same amount of time.
I think that's right. And I think overall, what it does is it allows us to actually enforce the signs.
Okay. I just wanted to, I thought maybe you could come on our DBA in the audience. This was a little un... Okay. I just wanted to, I thought maybe tomorrow, DBA in the audience, um, this was a little unclear. So yeah, efforts to communicate. I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, this allows us to turn the signs back on tomorrow.
Councilman Schwartz. I think you just answered my question. For what time in your opinion would end upon the approval of this amendment?
I think it could, yes.
You'll need to make action to do that, but you can.
Correct.
And a separate action.
Correct. Other comments?
So this is just on the amendment, right?
Ready for the um. Paul, say aye.
Aye.
When you post. Councilman Hensley.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. May I ask a series of questions of staff and then maybe make some comments? Okay, uh, that, I have to start with you. Sorry. Um, I'm wondering, who's our city traffic engineer?
Uh, our city engineer, I think his design is David Bang.
Okay, and does that also, so would he have the title city traffic engineer?
Uh, typically, yes.
Okay. All right.
I don't know if it's super clear or not, but that's how it is how it works.
At least in terms of tonight, David has been assigned the role of city traffic engineer. So, and he's not here, is he? Okay. Uh, so ordinance six, uh, one, six, two, six, seven, which was bill number twenty twenty-two dash zero five, zero, which Ryan was kind to email, I think the morning after our last meeting to us. Uh, I'll, I'll get to it in a second. Uh, it became effective August fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. And this is the amendment that added the two lines regarding frequency of parking to the existing time limit in twenty-two dash twenty A, which is the paragraph that remains in this bill. Okay. It was, it was section two, but it's that, it's that.
Okay, I got you.
Okay. And the last two lines that were added were comma, nor shall a vehicle be parked within the same time limit zone as determined on a block by block basis more than once per calendar day except Sundays. Are we on the same page?
Yes.
Okay. Do you happen to recall why this ordinance change was made?
I, I don't recall. I don't recall it being made, but uh.
That makes.
Sure.
At least two of us. It might make twelve or more of us. Um, yeah, so that was added through this bill and that ordinance. And it looks like it became effective August sixteenth, I think, of twenty twenty-two that, okay. So again, that's when the new once daily language was made. So after this amendment, this code section now contains a length of time restriction, right? It contains, you can't park longer than the prescribed time limit between designated hours language. So that's one. And it also contains this, now this number of times restriction that I just read about not parking more than once per calendar day. Do we, can we agree on that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it certainly changed the verbiage, but it seems like it kind of says the same thing or what we can do.
Well, does it, did we add language to say the same thing or did we add new language?
Well, it was certainly new.
Right. Because in the existing language we had, you can't park longer than the time limit. And then we added it. You can't park more than once in a calendar day, right?
Uh, yeah.
So you can't park longer than this amount and you can't park more than this number of times, right? So we will write the ticket on a vehicle that's parked in the zone for more than ninety minutes according to that sign that was up on the screen earlier. But we will also write a ticket on a vehicle that's been parked in the same zone more than one time in a given calendar day, no matter how many minutes they may have parked there in any one time or all together, right?
Uh, if it's uh beyond when they check it, the ninety minutes and it may have moved or not, we weren't necessarily tracking that aspect of it.
Yeah, because we can't actually track the amount of time cumulatively someone might park in a zone if they're there several times throughout the day.
Correct.
Because they might come for five minutes to get coffee and then come back later to pick up some lunch and maybe even come back in the middle of the afternoon for a quick meeting. And over the course of those three visits, they were only on the block for forty-five minutes. But then they get a ticket either on the second visit or the third visit. And they think it's because they've violated the ninety minute parking, because that's all that's written on the sign, right?
Right.
Okay. But these are two separate grounds for giving a ticket.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So she said, this is how we've been doing it. So is this how we were regulating parking in these timed unmetered zones before passing this amendment last August?
Uh, as long, I've worked here about twenty-one years. Uh, as, as far as I know, I think the signs were original from that, that timeframe. Uh, you know, we might have replaced it, but with the same, essentially the same sign. But uh, uh, the, there used to be the allowance of chocky tires, which made this a little easier to determine if, if people were moving about or not.
So at least twenty-one years, we've been doing it like this.
Uh, as I, as I recall.
So are these violations coded differently? Like, is there a code either by the parking division or in the municipal court or anything for like one code for the ninety minute violation and one code for parking more than once in a zone?
I think it's the same thing, but I could be correct.
Okay.
I, I don't know the answer for sure.
Okay. So from a data perspective, because I know everyone loves data as much as I do, uh, tracking two separate types of violations differently, even if they happen to exist in the same ordinance section, really help from a data perspective to see just how many times we're ticketing people for the violation that's not actually written on the sign, but is virtually every way different from the violation that is written on the sign. Do we have any estimate of how many tickets we write uh in a weekly basis or annually? Or since August of last year or for the last twenty-one years based on the parking more than once in a zone in a day that.
Yeah, I did ask uh if we could look into that and I got an email back about it recently. Uh, basically, it says here fourteen percent were for overtime in non-metered areas. So that would be primarily the downtown area, that, that ninety minute zone area. Uh, and so fourteen percent of those, that's what that was for.
But for.
Of our tickets.
For overtime.
Our, our tickets for overtime in the non-metered areas.
Okay, but not, but that's not breaking it up between being overtime and parking too many times.
I don't think there's a distinction, actually.
You don't think that there's a difference or even or.
I don't think how the tickets are done. I don't think it, it, it's try, I think it's, I believe, I don't know, right? Maybe he recalls.
It's, it's the same ordinance. So to the extent that it's coded to an ordinance, it would be coded the same, the same section.
Is there a way for us to start tracking that? Because they're two totally different things.
Yes.
Right. Actually, I don't know. Okay. Can we go, can we build a time machine and go back to the first start track? Okay, so the once per day restriction is not, it's never been posted on the signs, right? I think we can all agree. That's what he just said.
I think it was trying to clarify that, uh, you know, you were, you were, you should move ahead and things like that. It's what I, what guess I suspect was going on, right?
It says ninety minute parking, eight AM to five PM, except Sunday. And we regulate this according to that. I think it appears to regulate it on a spot by spot basis. It doesn't say anything on the zone, I think. Do you know if we decided not to post it on signs?
Uh, no. I mean, well, I guess uh whenever they put the sign up, they, they might have agreed on the language or somebody come up with it and posted it.
So why weren't the signs updated at least after the ordinance change in August of last year?
Uh, I, I don't think, I don't, I don't recall it being for, to issue two different tickets. I thought it, you know, it would appear to me that it was trying to clarify what was going on.
Can someone get a ticket for parking more than ninety minutes?
Uh, yeah, that's, I mean, that's what the.
Can someone get a ticket for parking more than once, even though they only parked for a total of thirty minutes?
Uh, well, the assumption would be that they've been there more than ninety minutes if they run the zone multiple times. They don't know if you're there. That's what I'm saying.
But the more than one time per day. I thought we had, I thought we agreed. So the more than one time per day is, it's measuring and citing something different than parking for a single time more than ninety minutes, right? I asked because two years ago, I got my first complaint about this and somebody since then, I've gotten a few dozen. And we, I remember we asked two years ago just for clarity on this. And I think it all just kind of got lost in the ether. But they described exactly the scenario. And then when they went to city hall or I can't remember where tickets were enforced at that point and they asked about it, they were told, oh yeah, that's just how it works. Uh, we don't, you just can't park on the same block more than one time in a day. And they wound up waving the ticket because it's not posted on the sign. Which, you know, is fair to that person. I'm just still curious why we're still writing the tickets if it's fair to wave the ticket because it's not posted on the sign for that one particular person. Um, okay. So we're familiar with city code. Are you familiar with section twenty-two dash three? Or is David perhaps familiar with section twenty-two dash three, which was enacted in nineteen seventy-seven?
Uh, every time somebody asks me a call, I gotta go back and read that code section.
Okay, it's pretty short. It is titled Signs Required For Enforcement. And it says, wherever any parking time limit is imposed or parking is prohibited on designated streets or roadways, it shall be the duty of the city traffic engineer to erect appropriate signs giving notice thereof, comma, and no parking restriction or regulation shall be effective unless signs are erected and in place at the time of an alleged offense. So enacted in nineteen seventy-seven, the once per day limit is not posted. It's never been posted on our signs. We issue tickets based on it at some frequency, but we don't measure it. We still haven't updated our signs, even though it was added as a separate provision or code nine months ago. I mean, I don't know how it couldn't be clearer that we can't enforce that unless it's posted on our signs. We've been enforcing it for twenty-one years or more. I don't know when, if it started before you got here, but it couldn't be more clear. I don't know how this would not wipe out the validity of every single ticket written on this basis for the last twenty-one years. They are obviously different violations. The fact that we can't track someone's time over the course of a day is not their fault. It is not their fault that we have not updated our signs. I'm just wondering how we're gonna administer refunding all of these tickets for the past twenty-one years because they are a thousand percent, in my view, contrary to code. And once we realized that there was something going on two weeks ago, it was still like a weird curiosity, like more than once a week, like we all get people complaining to us about tickets. But for me, every once or, or how they're treated by, you know, people are, I'd be treated by city staff or blah, blah, blah. But people kept coming with this same weird issue. Like, I promise you, John, I was not parked there more than ninety minutes. The sign says ninety minute parking. What's the deal? And I remembered back to that thing two years ago and I'm like, well, I think there's, they enforce it in a way that's kind of strange. And again, we're talking about parking tickets and I know some people might view this as a small thing or too important, unimportant to bring up or um, I don't know, I just, it's just like a fundamental duty to treat people honestly and fairly, especially if you are a government who's attempting to act against someone. And granted, maybe it's only a five or a ten dollar ticket, but I'm just increasingly shocked and angry when I find obvious instances where that's not been honored. And I don't know, I, I happen to believe that the small things are the big things. And if a public employee or official is willing to accept a slight mistruth in their mind, a small lie, that person is almost every time also perfectly happy to accept the big lies. And this type of thing where, and we don't have time right now to start going into the decision-making that went into not tracking these two separate violations. But this is extraordinary to me, uh, even though it is, I mean, it's, it's five or ten dollars at a time. But it's because when we raised concerns about why is it the way this is? The answer that came back was, oh, no, no, don't worry. It's actually working exactly as it was designed, which made the hairs on the back of my neck stand up. And then when we read the ordinance that was slid through nine months ago for something we've been doing for twenty-one years, apparently, it couldn't have been clear. If I were in the position of prosecutor again and someone brought me a ticket to charge with this series of facts, I'm saying, we're not even complying with our own code. There's no notice. Uh, there is, uh, I, there are a ton of problems with this. I don't know how I could possibly accept it and charge it and pursue it. So that was a giant glaring red flag to me. I think other people noticed it too. And sometimes as leaders of a government, you have to be willing and able to act immediately to stop further harm from happening, from allowing the continued enforcement of something that is obviously unjust. And yeah, it's a five or a ten dollar parking ticket. And yeah, that's probably why we don't hear a lot of, you know, there aren't riots in the streets and marches and banners. We don't get complaints and phone calls all the time about it. But it couldn't be clearer to me what's been going on for twenty-one years based on this, when it could have just been put on a sign, if not when we were, I mean, I, I guess I wouldn't expect it to be put on our signs when it wasn't actually part of the code. But once it was put into code, uh, and it was applied and enforced as an actual code restriction in the city, there is an official in this town who has an obligation to make sure that it's put on a sign. And the consequence of it not being put on a sign is that we can't enforce it. So I think of that to where I started. I, I do appreciate all of council's work on it. And it wasn't clear cut. We just knew we had like a weird confusing set of facts. And it took a day or two after our last meeting to sort of piece everything together and see what we actually had. Um, and that's why we pressed pause because something smelled super wrong. And you know, I said in our last meeting, you know, my focus on this has been addressing this particular issue because I've been hearing about it for two years. And at the exact same time, understanding obviously the entire downtown business community has a huge stake in how parking is administered, uh, and affects their shops. And what I said last time also was, but I would also hope that they would join us in not wanting the city to continue ripping off their customers now that we know that we've been doing so contrary to code for apparently twenty-one years. The moment we found out that we were not doing right by the people who are parking down there to visit your shops and your restaurants, we stopped issuing those tickets until we could figure out what the problem was. And now tonight, the goal is to make our ordinance again fit, uh, match our signs. So the city traffic engineer doesn't have to go out of his way to, you know, make the signs match the ordinance for a little while anyway. And that's been the whole point of this. So I appreciate everybody's work on this. Appreciate everybody coming to speak tonight. I'm sorry that it's half a ton of trouble.
Thank you for your comments. Other comments? Get the amended bill before you. Get the amended bill before you. Alright, we're gonna do a roll call vote on twenty twenty-three dash zero one three as amended.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And again, we appreciate everybody that come in. I I hope that the message was sent, those councils try to do what's right for our entire business community. Appreciate the work that Councilman Henzis put in good, Councilman Spencer. We appreciate the downtime and the comments that we received. We're gonna. I'll speak for myself. I want us to, I hope that we will address issues head-on and do them appropriately. And I think as Councilman Henzis laid out. Feeling and I said during the meeting last Tuesday that. I one hundred percent supported council. I appreciated the work they did and I commend them for taking a tough step. I think we've now seen some of the fruits of that. I do believe there's another action item that Councilman Spencer would like to.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to end the moratorium.
Alright, good. End it immediately.
What's that?
End it immediately.
Right now?
And we've got a motion on table on the second to end the moratorium immediately, which means. Business operations next day. Any other comments, questions? We're gonna do a roll call vote on that as well.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Thank you, Councilman. Again, thanks for being here and thank you for your input. Sounds like we may be talking about parking again. We we appreciate your your input into it. We're gonna jump to, we got just a few items. And I I promised that we would take a break, but we got a few items to get to close sessions. We may try to get through those and we'll take a break. For item twelve bills pending, and I jumped over this in the pre-pre meeting, item twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, designating fourteen thirty-one Greenberry Road as a local historic landmark.
We're going back to Ms. Sensen.
Yes, thank you. Um, the Stark Preservation Commissioner received a landmark application for fourteen thirty-one Greenberry Road. Um, its historic name is the Dewey House. It is, the Dewey House is already listed as contributing in the Frank Miller National Register Historic District. It is located right on the turn where where Greenberry starts. Um, the Mc, uh, sandwiched between the McHenry House and the Nacy House, also designed by Frank Miller. Um, the HPC unanimously approved, uh, the recommendation of fourteen thirty-one Greenberry Road. Um, it met all criteria of designation, um, specifically the identification of work of a master builder, designer, or architect. Um, who was Frank Miller. This, um, is located on on the physical property of fourteen, um, thirty-one Greenberry Road. Other properties, um, that you all know of is the local landmarks within Jefferson City that were also designed. Uh, by Frank Miller, Bull County Courthouse, the Central Bank Building. Um, and also other residential properties off of Wesley.
Any questions? Alright, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero three in front of the roll call vote.
Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Thank you. We've done oh four, oh five, oh six, oh seven. That takes us to twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat, McCarty View subdivision, a subdivision of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Thank you, Mayor. So this bill would approve a final subdivision plat with the property. The property is located just off the junction of St. Louis Road and East McCarty Street. The Daisy Light Restaurant is located right there. And so this property right here. Uh, the property was formerly, you know, included two apartment buildings up here on St. Louis Road. Those were divided off by administrative parcel division process a couple of months ago and, uh, property owner is bringing over this plat. Plat, uh, and so there's a very old view of the the property. The property has a little bit of frontage on St. Louis Road. And then most of its frontage on East McCarty Street. And so plat would, uh, the final subdivision plat would divide that property into three lots. One lot fronting on St. Louis Road and two lots fronting on East McCarty Street. The property was, is zoned at RA two, which is a multifamily residential zoning district. Um, that would permit apartments and things like that, but the stated intent by the owners of the property is to construct duplexes. One duplex on each lot, so for a total of three duplexes, six units. Um, this matter was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. At their meeting on April thirteenth and was recommended for approval on a vote of eight to zero. There's no public hearing associated with subdivision plats, um, but we do have, uh, the. Property owner's developer, sorry, engineer, Paul Sampson, uh, who prepared the plat, uh, in attendance. If there's any questions, he's certainly happy to answer any questions Councilman has.
Are there any questions of Mr. Baron or Mr. Sampson? Great job. Alright, we have twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight in front of the roll call vote, please.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer? Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Twenty twenty-three dash zero zero nine.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, vacating and discontinuing a drainage control easement on the property addresses two eleven Oscar Drive. The city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Thank you. Clerk indicated this would just vacate in East, but it's no longer needed on this property.
Questions? Roll call vote?
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Sorry.
Nothing on the formal resolutions, resolution twenty twenty-three dash four.
A resolution authorizing the Jefferson City Fire Department to participate in the Missouri firefighters critical illness trust and pool. And further authorizing the mayor to execute such documents as may be necessary for the department's participation therein.
Chief Schofield?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This, uh, this resolution is a formal support required by the Missouri. Critical illness trust and pool for us to make application. Uh, you'll recall that that application was also, um. Supported and complicated in the most recent collective bargaining agreement between the city and local six seventy-one. Uh, this, uh, this program is, uh, supported by the state of Missouri through, um. Contributions and. Support through the various different cancer coverages. Uh, it it also provides a few additional benefits not only to firefighters, um, and getting faster payouts. And streamlines the process, but also an advantage for the city and caps some of the losses and counts towards the total. Total award amount for our workers' comp. So there are some benefits to the city. There's also benefits to, uh, the covered employees. Under the state cancer trust and pool. And like I said, uh, this is something that is a stipulation under the existing collective bargaining agreement. But this resolution is required for us to make applications. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions, Chief? Councilman Spencer?
Just real quick, um, this is a big deal and, um, I appreciate, uh, the local and the fire administration working together to to get this done. Um, you know, when I started firefighting career in nineteen ninety-two, uh, we just worried about lung cancers. Now we worry about testi- testicle cancer, breast cancer, liver, all all of our internal body, uh, organs, types of cancers, so. Uh, they are definitely making those connections now with with the data that that proves and supports that. So I just, uh, urge my colleagues to support this. Really appreciate the work that, like I said, uh, local and the fire administration's been doing on this.
You mentioned data because you knew Councilman Hensley hung up on that.
Yeah, I think we all are hung up on data now, so.
As long as we track all illnesses according to the same code. I think that'll really help.
Sorry, let me know if that one up. Alright. We're gonna do a roll call.
Do we have a motion in the second?
You didn't, you, the mayor missed it. Do we have a motion to receive at this resolution? Motion to approve? I think I. I think Councilman Spicer actually, Councilman Spencer seconded. Alright, now you have the resolution before you.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz? Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, resolution twenty twenty-three dash five.
A resolution authorizing the city of Jefferson to apply for the buses and bus facilities, section five three three nine green.
You're carrying a big load tonight, Mr. Maron.
Big gas.
Okay, uh, double map. So this is our locator system for our buses. Uh, the parent company is gonna discontinue this. Uh, it's an app on your phone. You can also do it online, I believe. But, uh, anyway, it locates our buses. It also announces where the stops are. So if you're riding a bus, it'll come over the, over the system and let you know your stop's coming up. It also counts the passengers on and off. So that's how we keep track where folks are getting on and off. So we have to build that system. We can get a grant for it. What we did last time, we tried to get a grant for a five-year contract, uh, for a system. And, uh, cost dry land here in the bill summary, but we're estimating around four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the system. Uh, the match is about eighty-five. That's from the local, uh, housing capital for itself, so. Glad to answer any questions. This is just the grant application at this point.
Questions? We'll need a motion on this one. Alright, do a roll call vote?
Lester?
Aye.
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Alright, resolution twenty twenty-three dash six.
A resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a lien release agreement with H and H Global Investments LLC.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, in bringing, uh, for this, uh, lien release agreement, uh, basically we have a property at six twenty-two East McCarty. Uh, that has, uh, some comforts there with some tax, uh, property has changed hands and resolution would essentially cancel out those claims. Uh, with the assumption that the new owner would, um, basically put some money into that, uh, redevelopment at site. Demolition could be part of that and also potentially redevelopment of it. Uh, so the, uh, resolution through those claims kind of help, uh, foster his ability to to improve that property. Uh, we have, uh, a property, uh, managed supervisor, uh, Dave Helms here. The current owner of the site is also here. Got some additional detailed questions. Probably answer anything, uh, that you have.
Alright, any questions of any of our guests? Alright, we will again need action on this.
Posse being moved forward with the recommendation.
Motion?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Do a roll call vote?
Mealy?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
No.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Presentation passed.
Alright, thanks. Presentation with the gallery. I I just want, I was gonna make a comment. We have the vice chairman of our planning and zoning committee here. And I know Councilman Lester has spent a lot of time with planning and zoning. I don't know if we've seen your time. For your meeting, but we appreciate all the work that the planning and zoning has done. There were some good issues late before council. I thought good questions, but we appreciate your work on planning and zoning to get things to us. So thanks. Item sixteen, or item fifteen presentations. I don't see anybody left who would like to speak. Item sixteen, council and staff discussion. I seen any hands jumping in the air. New business, item seventeen, four oh eight Lafayette.
Yes, all of it and, uh, during that, so, yes, we have a, um, opposed demolition here for four oh eight Lafayette Street. So, uh, just to provide some context, um, the city owns this property, um, actually a couple of properties, uh, immediately a body in the site. And we put out the bid, received the bid back to the property. We wanted to bring this one forward, uh, because it does have a little bit of history. Uh, we did take it to the public works and planning, uh, committee and went through a little bit of that history and they did vote. Uh, forward to the, to the full, uh, council to receive kind of, uh, approval to move forward. Uh, but generally this type of demolition wouldn't necessarily always, uh, require approval because, um, the, uh, the bid for demolition wouldn't require it. So we did wanna take this extra step though, just give a little bit of the history and run through that really quick. Uh, the city has owned that piece since two thousand and nine. Um, since that time, it hasn't been declared a dangerous building. Um, there was, uh, a, um, time in the past where it was, uh, included in the historic, uh, district. Uh, so there is, that's a little part of the history is that, uh, with that kind of designation, usually that applies and we are trying to preserve buildings. Um, we have gone through a little bit of process to try to sell that to someone who's looking for redevelopment. Um, and done some things, attempting, I think, to facilitate the redevelopment. Uh, those were unsuccessful. Um, it was hit by the tornado again, uh, in two thousand and nineteen. So, uh, since that time, it's kind of set again and kind of deteriorated further. So, um, with that demolition bid, we're kind of looking at. Um, the price that we did get for that, we did wanna bring it from the council, um, just to clarify that we will be moving forward with that unless there's objections to that. Um, but just to note that history there and and that there has been some attempts to preserve it and do something else with it in the past. Um, unfortunately, those were unsuccessful. The historic reservation did review the application for demolition in two thousand seventeen and it was approved. They looked at it again last week, um, just kind of a favorable basis. So they're aware that this is coming in from a council. Been receiving any specific objections to it. I'll know, I'm sure if you ask them, they, their preference would be to try to preserve it, but I think they understand the circumstances here. So really, we're looking, I think, for general direction, um, from council to go ahead and move forward with with, uh, the demolition at this point.
Councilman Henzis?
Thank you, just a few.
Did you have a hand up, Councilman Wiseman?
I did, but Councilman Hensley, you know, first, he's on the end.
Thank you. So just a couple of random questions. So the action request is that council vote to approve the demolition?
I think it's. No, I think, uh, affirmative. Staff would like approval by the city council to demolish this, this.
Okay, and then what I think, and this is the least important question, but I'm just kidding. Was it, was it hit by the tornado?
I'm sorry?
Was the, was this building hit by the tornado?
Believe from history, it was damaged to some degree.
No, the windows in the roof were damaged during the tornado. Was it catastrophic? Okay. Um, the property sat vacant since about twenty, or two thousand and seven. Uh, it's been vacant for quite a while since the tornado further damaged the structure. It it was not catastrophic. Thanks. And then finally, um, the, so the city proper owns the building? Cause I I have some memory. I was talking about. Maybe transferring it to parks or something.
Yeah, so this, this per, this property was purchased under the NSP program many, many years ago. Ultimately, that program failed. Um, has a lot to do with the, uh, property's location in the flooding flood plain. Um, and so the, uh, the city was able to remove the federal ties. Uh, to the property that were associated with the NSP program. Now the city owns that property free and clear of any federal ties. There, yes.
Councilman Wiseman, we'll get Councilman Wiseman.
Is this?
No, go ahead. Did you have something else?
So if we vote to approve or clear the way for demolition, did I hear you say that there would be? Is there an opportunity for someone to step forward and take it over or or no?
No, I don't think that's part of the plan right now. There's been opportunities in the past, like I said, they've been unsuccessful. But if that is something the council would like to see happen, we can certainly do that. The demolition is imminent. We're not going to do it. Uh, immediately. So if there's additional steps that we'd like to take, we can certainly have that discussion.
Councilman.
Thank you. Is, is this the property that we almost had sold once? Like we did bids and we had a whole closed session on it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
You know, you know more about.
Uh, yeah, so, so we did do a public offering of this property. Had some open houses. Uh, the city had a minimum bid requirement on there. We, we received one offer and that uh, that bid requirement was not met.
But was, but wasn't part of that, like we've spent like fifty thousand dollars on the property or something, keeping it up?
There was a substantial investment in the worth. Uh, that's, that's fifty thousand sounds about right. I don't know.
Seventy-eight?
Seventy-eight thousand dollars. And so essentially what, what we were able to do was uh, take that money and uh essentially we had to give it back to the feds. And then the feds reallocated back to the city and were able to use that for other projects, thereby removing the federal ties.
Right. I know that that federal ties was like a huge, a huge mess, but uh, I, so I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify. We've already spent like seventy, what'd you say, seventy-eight thousand dollars on it? We're asking to spend almost fourteen thousand dollars more instead of selling it to these people? And I say that, I mean, that's an option, isn't it? Just saying, let's go back to this bid process, see if any of these people want it real quick.
That is an option, yeah.
So that way we're not spending more taxpayer dollars on it?
That is an option.
Okay.
Well, Councilman Lester.
When this was reviewed, I think the planings aren't anyway, uh, also related to this, there's three houses around that that are owned by parks that are much worse off falling in. And my understanding is demolition will include that whole area, uh, which is consistent with making, making it a green space since it's uh, in the flood plain. So it's, it's not, it's not just this house itself, uh, that's part of this. It's by and again.
Right. And maybe I'll throw to Dave Helmick, can I give you an overview of some of the other demos that are gonna occur in?
So in, in this half a block, there's three blighted properties that currently remain. Those three are owned. Uh, one by the city and two by the Parks Department. The Parks Department received those properties as a donation uh for them to be demolished. One's a fire burn. Uh, the other one's, that's at six point three School Street. Uh, there's one at four ten Lafayette, which is next door to the one that we're talking about, and then this one. Uh, there was one other structure that was in this section of the block, but it burnt last year and the owner went through and voluntarily demolished that structure. So this would be the only structure remaining, what was uh planned to be green space uh in the neighborhood plan and the different uh plans that have come out over the years. Uh, talked to multiple uh property owners in the area. They, they're in favor of this being demolished. I'm not gonna speak on behalf of any of them. Uh, but I'm sure uh, you know, you can reach out to them. Uh, but what we are looking at is removing the blight. Uh, because currently the other properties in that neighborhood that need to be rehabbed, one just changed hands to a new owner who has plans to remove that blight. Another one last year sold to a new owner. So really the only remaining dangerous buildings, blighted buildings in this neighborhood are the ones owned by the city. And this would be the last one standing out of the three that the city uh combined with parks still own.
Am I wrong? And I, I thought that since it wasn't a flood plain, they can only put, what, fifty percent of purchase price on the rehab?
Yes.
So they bought it for a hundred thousand, they could put fifty thousand, but they're only gonna pay, what, ten thousand? Then they cannot put fifty percent of that, right, to fix?
Correct, yeah.
There's really no way to fix it.
It's, 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 it's hard to see how someone could successfully do a, a, like really good uh job on a rehab.
Mr. Barron.
Yeah, just to clarify. So if you could put fifty percent and keep it where it's at, by flood insurance, et cetera, until you get that mark, then you have to bring it into compliance. So we did several years ago, a little update on this. You'd have to raise the, the floorboards off. Uh, not an easy task in these particular areas. And then also all the electrical, HVAC, all that stuff has to come up, be located somewhere else than it is today. So I think that deters people from wanting to, to buy it and do that. Once they figure that out, that's, that's a pretty big cost.
Councilman Wright?
Administrator, uh, so how's the city, what criteria do you use? How do you determine what the minimum bid is gonna be when you put out four bids? So uh, it's different for each property. And in the previous instance, it was attempting to garner some funds in order to help pay back some of the money that had already been invested in the property. And I, 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 I don't have the number off the top of my head. It's either twenty or forty thousand. Twenty sounds right. Um, yeah, and, and so uh, and the bid that we received, I believe was less than half of that. Uh, but to answer your broader question, it's just on a like property by property basis. So there's no consistent criteria for determining what that minimum bid is gonna be. Each property is unique.
Councilman Neely, Councilman Schwartz.
Is it reasonable that they, they, just asking my colleagues, that somebody would purchase that property with intent to demolish? And then the city could get out of, that's the direction, and then the city could get out of that demolition cost? And put that on it. But I don't wanna say developer, cause it's a small area. But I, I say that because if there is intent in the surrounding properties to do good things, um, that might incentivize somebody to acquire that property with the, uh, with the intent to, you know, demolish themselves. And then whatever they're gonna do there. I know the flood plain is gonna be a, a big issue with uh, finding incentive.
I would think, why, I would just, I would think that that might hinder the timetable of some of the other properties or.
For, from, from my, my perspective, uh, sorry if I cut something off here. So from my perspective, um, I think kind of best case scenario is if we could package this property with the parks properties, um, also being demolished and offer those up for redevelopment. Uh, that could have a greater chance of garnering interest from a redevelopment perspective. Um, having fairly clean site for someone to cast their development wishes onto and, and, you know, pursue a plan as opposed to trying to do this on a property, property basis and, and, you know, trying to fit something onto these fairly narrow lots. Uh, I certainly understand uh wanting to avoid the demolition cost. Um, demolition cost here is, is pretty minimal. We do lots of demos, um, of blighted properties that cost a whole lot more than this. Uh, and so, so certainly understand, but, but I, I think from a overall impact to the community in this area, um, doing a clean demo site and then offering up redevelopment, I think is a more direct way. And if you do it correctly and, and there's appropriate developers that wanna make something of this site, you're gonna be able to garner a higher purchase price. Um, if you have a clean site that doesn't have liabilities on it. So it's speculative if you will get more money, try to sell it as is, and someone else takes care of the demo. Or we take the, care of the demo and try to get a higher price, you could come out upside down on that.
Yeah.
Uh, but it, it's, it's more likely to garner successful redevelopment, my opinion, if you do have a clean site.
Councilman Schwartz.
I don't know if this is rhetorical or who I'm even asking, but what's the process of somebody saying, I got some junk here that I want rid of? Will the city take it and pay for it to be torn down in the flood plain?
Generally, so we get offered that very frequently and generally we turn that down. If there is a, a vision that could be used for a piece of property, we could, we could pursue it. Uh, generally any acquisitions of uh real estate, no, I won't say any, generally, any acquisitions of the real estate after you're put by the city council. For the Parks Commission. Sorry.
Councilman Spencer, do you have any action, you know, secret forward from your work?
Well, we, we, we heard the, the same information and we felt very comfortable and connected, pushing forward. Then for demolition, um, to kind of get economy of scale, uh, for not only the parks properties, but this property too. And, and, you know, I think, I think the parks might have a vision for that possibility of, of a park or something. And I think it.
Initially, when, when it was brought to us, there was uh, in the neighborhood plan, uh, many years ago, that property, because it was in the flood plain, had, had been designated as green space. So that was the reason that it was offered and the parks just accepted it at that time. And I think perhaps that was the city's kind of bringing back in that time.
And I think it, it was offer an opportunity to convey a historical context and message of, of that area in the fifth district uh that, that we recently, you know, uh, designated. And uh, so I think uh, that's an opportunity to fulfill that, in my opinion.
You have a motion?
That is my motion. How's that?
I was just gonna attack those Councilman Spencer's statements that, yeah, is the liaison to the historic preservation commission. That was their sentiment as well, that, that the area be, you know, the, the residents be involved in, in decisions made there to kind of incorporate that into the meaning of the area.
Ready to vote? Roll call book.
Can, can, can we get clarification on what the motion is? To, to proceed on with tearing down four oh eight Lafayette Street, right, for demolition?
Your name, clerk? Alright, we'll do a roll call book.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Wiseman?
No.
Wright?
Aye.
Pollers?
Aye.
Deacon?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Neely?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Alright, we believe we've moved to page four. Well, I think we're, are we on to the, are we standing here?
It's, that's, that's your preference. Um.
We have one vote for last day. I think that weighs all of ours, so.
May your ideas go into the session.
Thank you very much. That is our roll call book.
She needs to read the uh, provisions up to the right.
Pursuant to section six ten dot zero two one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the chair will obtain a motion to go into closed session, closed session to discuss the following, attorney-client privilege section six ten oh two one one, I require you discipline anyone for promoting a particular employee, section six ten oh two one three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, section six ten oh two one thirteen. Do I have a motion? Wiseman?